All right. Well, now I call the city council regular meeting to order for June the third. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be given by Deputy Mayor Jim Bernard.
Let's pray. Good heavenly Father, thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you for your love. We ask you to protect all those that are here tonight, walking them, that have school kids, they're on a school now, they're walking streets, they're running around. You be careful, protect them dear Lord. We ask you to guide us tonight, give us the wisdom to do your will, to do the best will for the city of Avon Park. And we do it as a peace and same in heaven.
At the United States of America, to the faithful who wish to stand, one nation under God, we need this for liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Madam, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember McCure.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. First item number four is to be a proclamation for the Peter Powell Roberts Day. Jerry, if you don't mind.
Do that.
I left your printed copy.
All my papers here. Thank you. Whereas Peter Powell Roberts was born one hundred years ago on July twenty first nineteen twenty four in Ohio to his immigrant mother twenty two days after arriving from Wales. And whereas Peter Powell Roberts pioneered the computer graphic design program at Ringland College of Art where he was an instructor for twenty three years. And whereas Peter Powell Roberts acclaimed Florida master artist was an influential and innovative artist and teacher, creating beautiful paintings, three dimensional pieces, and other original artworks with a unique vision of nature's cycle of life. And whereas Peter Powell Roberts had no heirs upon his death in two thousand fourteen donated his entire collection to the Heartland Cultural Alliance who is who are responsible for the storage, curation, and display of over one hundred pieces of artwork. And whereas the city of Avon Park was instrumental in the acquisition of the award winning Peter Powell Museum of Art and Cultural Center located in the heart of Avon Park, the second floor of the city's community center. Now therefore be it resolved that this Avon Park City Council hereby proclaim July twenty first two thousand twenty four as Peter Powell Roberts Day. The city is called upon its citizens and businesses to join this celebration of arts and culture in our community and to support the original art created by talented locals.
Thank you very much. All right, there was a typo on the consent agenda. So item number six, which is ITB number twenty four dash oh eight is actually moved to item number eleven. Item number eleven is put back in its place. So the consent agenda will also include ITB twenty four dash oh nine Avon Park Recreation Center Roof Replacements. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Yes, I would like to move C six to D. For discussion.
Okay.
That's what you did?
Yeah.
Okay.
What about C seven? Over that.
Sure. All right. Well, let's just take them one at a time then. So item number five is to be the minutes of city council regular meeting from May thirteenth. Be looking for a motion.
Make a motion to approve minutes for May thirteenth twenty twenty four, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, next item will be ITB twenty four dash oh nine. It's to be the Avon Park Recreation Center Roof Replacement. Found as item number eleven in your packet. Did you have a question on that one Bernice? Or was it just item number six, the twenty four dash oh eight? Okay. Is there any questions on ITB twenty four dash oh nine? Avon Park Recreation Center Roof Replacement.
Um, I actually have a question on that one.
Okay.
So if the number didn't get switched up, and I'm not misunderstanding this altogether, the lowest bid was cob roofing.
No, you haven't switched.
Yeah, that one needs to be.
Yeah, so he corrected my mistake.
Gotcha, gotcha. All right.
So you're actually looking at item number eleven in your packet.
Okay.
And Jason, you're the lead on that one. Do you want to give us an overview real quick?
You switch them off. Okay, so we um we received an email from the insurance provider that for the city came back and told us about a pending deadline to go out and that, you know, if we were going to replace the roof or what we were going to do. So this one of the first things that that came across my desk when I got here. So we went out. Um, looked at the roofs and we end up, we held um I we we three, three separate roofs. So one was the public works facility. The other one was the MLK, the recreation and the shuffleboard. So we went out different times. We opened up three separate ITBs. And we met all the professionals out there. I think at that, at that um at the ITB, the onsite meeting, we had something like eleven or twelve vendors that were out there. I'll look at the roof. Couple came a little bit later, so I stayed back and showed them as well. Uh, so everyone looked at the roofs and then they they submitted their bids. There was a question that came up about the the type of roof and we all kind of, we all that were out there agreed on what type of roof to go with, and we changed that up in the bid specs. So everybody bid on that. And during the bid, this is AO Construction was the lowest, most responsive bidder.
At a grand total of one hundred forty one thousand twenty five dollars.
Yes.
Yeah, and just uh, I appreciate the way that you guys did the breakdown on that. Very thorough, shows exactly what the specifications of the actual project is. So really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, any questions on this roof replacement?
I just have one question that somebody probably here can answer. I I looked at the metal roof, looked like said the gauge was twenty four gauge. Is that standard?
Depends on the types of roof, but twenty four gauge is a good gauge according to the the gauge and what we went with was what everybody recommend that when we were out there, we all said this is what we're going with. It's like kind of final answer.
Okay.
That's the quote, the mayor. So we, they all agreed upon that. And then that's how we wrote the spec.
All right. Yeah, the twenty four gauge is thicker than the twenty six.
Well, I understand that. I so I just didn't think twenty four gauge was that thick.
It's a lot more uh.
Than twenty six opposite.
Right.
Yeah, okay. So that's a standard as far as you know.
Everyone shine away from the twenty six gauge on the near flat roofs because they have had rust problems.
Oh, they used to have twenty six.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the the lower the number, the thicker the gauge. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this project?
Sure.
Yeah, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve ITB number twenty four dash zero nine to AO Construction for one hundred forty one thousand twenty five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seven, this would be DBT Transportation Services LLC for the AWAS system repairs.
Yes, sir. So from the documentation you received in your agenda packet, AWAS stands for Automated Weather Observation System. Uh, long and short of it, it it's a system that helps neurologists, pilots, and flight dispatchers prepare and monitor weather forecasts, plan flight routes, and provide necessary information for correct takeoffs and landings. So it's a vital piece of equipment. Um, DBT is a sole source provider, which means that they are the only provider in Florida that offers these services. And I do have Michael Powell here if you wish to ask him any questions.
Any questions about the AWAS system? I think somebody did say they had a question on number seven.
That was, I made a mistake.
Seeing no questions, does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the C seven for the AWS system repairs.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there anything you needed to share with us or? All right, please call the roll for item number seven.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eight, this would be a code enforcement lean reduction at one nine nine East Kemper Street. Randy.
This is this is coming back again. There was, I guess, an issue with the the um value paid to the violator that was remedied on here. I think Councilmember McGuire brought that up, um, got with Jerry, and it's back in front of you again.
Right. I looked it over and I think it's it's provided for in the um existing, but it's not a hundred percent clear. And always feel like we can make things more clear, but I think we should re-approve based on that. I spoke to Councilmember McGuire about as well.
So the recommendation is to approve at a hundred percent for the full twenty three thousand four hundred dollars?
Yes.
Okay, any questions on that?
No.
Seeing none, does anyone care to make a motion?
Make a motion, son. Move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Are you about to ask a question or are you just fixing the microphone? Okay, all right. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. All right, item number nine, this would be an event request, Shining Stars Bike and Toy Giveaway.
Uh, yes, I did not have an opportunity to reach out to Mister, excuse me, Minister Sykes. Um, so I'm presenting his event for him. It's a Shining Stars Bike and Toy Giveaway that's going to take place December twenty first from ten AM to five PM at Donaldson Park. There are no road closures and there would be no additional costs other than, I guess, opening the the restrooms to the city.
Good.
So help me out, Christie. It's a, you said Dunison Park. Is it Dunison Park or Carolina Church of Park?
It's being hosted by the Carolina Church of Christ at Donaldson Park.
Okay, you have your insurance and everything you need.
Uh, he has up until two weeks before the event to provide insurance. He is aware that he will need it and I will follow up with it.
Any other questions on this event? Seeing none, anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve D. I don't know what number it is.
Nine.
Nine. Shining Stars Bike and Toy Giveaway.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number ten, this would be an event request, BCO Inc. This would be for Juneteenth Victory March.
I have Arnold Wilson here to present on the event.
Mr. Wilson. Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Arnold Wilson, fourteen twelve South Carolina Avenue, Avon Park, Florida.
Yes.
Um, thank you for the opportunity to present All Lives Matter in our community. Uh, with that being said, we're going to honor our dream team for rent. So our first responders, we reached out to the Battle of the Bands to provide that extra effort force. And the march is going to start at East Cornell. Can you put up a to put the march route, is it possible?
They actually have the map.
Okay, so we're going to go from there to to the south side. Uh, Breckley's Mario Park. And that's when we write to present our Trailblazer Award for Big Front Community Outreach, which was an organization that started with my parents when we were alive, God bless them, in two thousand seven. And uh, for this year, I honor Jim Bernard and uh Councilwoman Bernice Taylor, the life for them, we are grand marshals for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, any questions about this Juneteenth event?
I just had one. It just says there's no additional cost to the city, but we're having to close roads, right?
I think. Yeah, there was minimal weekend pre-stage and I'll uh I'll go by there myself and just set out the cones. So I live close by and like to interact with the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Any other questions on this event? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve D ten for the event request of BCO Inc. Juneteenth Victory March.
We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Wilson, thank you very much. All right, so this will be item number six in your packet. The ITB twenty four dash oh eight. It's be the Avon Park Senior Center Shuffleboard Roof Replacement. Jason, if you have anything to add, please go ahead.
Uh, same as before, that we, when we discussed this, um, we met, we met with several different individuals out there, contractors, and we took a look at uh the roofing that was there. So just a little bit different. The roof itself is it's, it has panels that if you came up to today's standard, it would require additional ribbing, basically additional supports underneath the but since we're placing like for like and um and I made, I told the contractor that has to, has to pass, everything has to pass through the the building department. So if they're good to go, they signed off, then then we're fine. And so came back because there's different products, specifications, and I told them all to check in on that when they did their bids. I didn't want to specify any specific project, uh, product. And that's where we're at. So it came back and cob roofing was a lowest bid.
Uh, is this approved by the insurance?
Yes, it was approved for, um, it was approved for the replacement. There's still, I guess there were some things that were in the mix that we had to still reach out to them and show them that I guess it passed here and we approved it and then it goes over to them. So it was a little uh, back and forth, but hopefully if everything goes through here, then we get sent it to them and then we can get reimbursed.
But is this contract contingent upon us being reimbursed?
We're still waiting for the insurance to give us a formal approval that they won't be reimbursing us for that. So any approval on these bids will be contingent upon remittance of that insurance payment.
And that would be for this and the previous one that we.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We don't have to make a special motion for that. That's already set in stone.
Correct.
Yes. Name and address for the record, please.
Ralph Flores, twelve South Forest Avenue. I would not recommend cob roofing at all. They did my building downtown Miami, I mean downtown, downtown Sebring uh, back in twenty twenty. That's been four years. My roof has leaked every, ever since the day they did it. I've called back. They come by, put a little caulking on there here. Finally, a year ago, I sold the building, had it uh, done, take, took care of that. But I would not recommend them. Uh, once uh, in person, I can't think of his name right now. Uh, I left it alone because I did not want to bother because I've never.
Mike.
Mike was, uh, once he passed away, I refused to bother him. But once they opened up again, I continue insisting. We have you on the list for next Monday for sure. Next Monday, Ralph, we're going to be there. They did this game for me for two years, a year and a half. They played this game. Never, ever did it come back to repair the job. You're talking about the biggest building in downtown Sebring, two oh one Circle Park Drive, and they refused to come back and fix the job that they did.
Appreciate you saying something.
Well, I have a question about the price. That is a very significant difference in price from the rest of them. So when they, what's that?
About half of the next one to it.
Well. Um, so when they complete that, or do they come back? If they say, oh, we ran into some issues, we're going to have to put a supplement in. Just is that how that works? Are they going to come back and want more money? If they run into any kind of problems or issues?
Could, the, I think they did the community center building and was it the airport building? The old Warcraft building maybe?
I believe so.
Yeah. Couple of larger projects, I think they done. Have city staff had any issues or anything like that with?
I haven't had any there. I, I mean, I spoke to them and they seem very knowledgeable. They know what because of the roof and how it is, is getting into the specifications. And I didn't want to discourage anyone for try to say I wanted one specific product. And those are it's not very simple because each product is different, whether how that goes to the fourth Florida Building Code. So I told them and they were well aware and it has to, it has to pass. We can't, we can't come back that that roof won't work. It doesn't get, doesn't pass, anything like that. Needs to go up and.
So do you know if the other contractors actually bid for the same product that they bid for?
I didn't, that didn't come out what they were, what they were putting in.
Uh. Yeah. Name and address for the record while he's coming up. So Andy would have the bid packs, right?
Correct.
So in that bid pack, they should stipulate what products they're actually bidding, right?
So I, actually, when it, when it comes over, there's usually just a price and it doesn't say it's, I I think that's a somewhat that we, something we have to look at in the future because it has price and it doesn't necessarily go into detail of their, how they come about. It's just a lump sum price.
Okay.
So the bid that was put out or the package that was put out, it didn't ask for a specific type of roof. It just said replace the roof and then whatever they decided to replace it with.
Because I I I was trying to do research on that and find all the different, it's, it's, it's intense. You have to be a roofer to understand it.
It's basically, it's questionable if the the roof as it exists right now could be replaced and actually pass inspection and everything. Is that?
Yes, what they tell me is going to come back and it's going to be the same, basically the same roof that's up there now, but just without the dents in it.
Okay. Yes.
Two questions. One just got answered.
Name and address, please.
Chris Downey, one oh nine East Main Street Shuffleboard. Uh, thank you for bringing that up. Um, we're talking about the outside roof for the, for the shuffleboard courts?
Yes.
Okay, is that going to be connected to the roof of the building? Because right now it's not.
It's, it's not connect, it just has that flashing that so like that, that piece that's in there. They're going to replace that piece that's kind of it's like a gap in between the roof. We're not touching the roof
Yep.
of the, of the structure, the, the building, the shuffleboard, yes, the other no.
Okay, good. And then is that also tied into the termite remediation or is that something that's going to be?
That's a separate issue.
Okay.
But it's, but the, the timing is, is there.
That was my, thank you. Thank you, Jason.
Yes.
All right, and thank you, man.
Good.
So when was the last time that was replaced? Because it hasn't been that long ago, has it?
Early two thousands.
It's twenty, yes, twenty twenty two. It's been so long. Um, that was where the, um, it was already leaking, but then when the hail came in for that forty five minute storm, it it clearly did more damage. And I'm just concerned because you have that off, to your point, you have that offshoot of the water coming off the one roof, coming down into the area of the playing surface, which needs to be addressed before. And it's just confusing me why there's more parts than pieces. On, I didn't see the bid either. Not my business. It's a city building, but I'm just concerned how that's all going to come together.
It's, it is stated, what's got, what's, it's, it's replace. It's replace it. I need it replaced and I need it to pass. And where no one comes back and says, hey, you didn't do that how you were supposed to.
Okay.
So from what I understand, the, the, well, actually, I was told specifically that the contractor spoke with the building official and everything passes muster and they're good to go.
Okay. And if we can tie those all together, I think we talked about this before, and thank you very much for getting back to me on that. We can tie it all together um, to make sure it's less encumbrance to the, to the club.
In a perfect world, right?
I know.
If they were going to change anything, it would have to be part of the bid pack. And if it's not part of the bid pack, then you can guarantee it's not.
And there's other pieces involved, I think, as part of the master plan that we talked about previous meeting. Okay. All right, thank you, guys.
And this was in, in part of the bid that Andy did say to our purchasing agent. He did say that this, there was going to be a blend in between the, the tanning and he let everybody know that. So everybody knows to kind of and I think the goal is somewhere in between, just to kind of give it with the tanning be on the weekend that that's, it's ready somewhat that Friday, you know, so they can come in tent and then Monday, so it wouldn't be uh, much conflict with the, with the actual uh, replacement of the roof.
Yeah, and it's actually good timing and I've had good communication uh, since the changes. Um, and I can give you a schedule too, that helps, but usually we can just not shuffle on Saturdays and.
Could you send that to me?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
So was there a discussion with, like you discussed, the twenty four gauge and the twenty six gauge with the actual contractors out there? Was there any discussion? Maybe some that didn't agree with putting back the pans or?
Because of it's how, how it comes about and what's, what's allow, what's not allowed. I, I just dealt with their expertise and how do we go about doing it? Otherwise, you know, there's some things that can have a longer stretch, but then so I said, listen, I need you to, whoever gets it, you're gonna, you're gonna have to replace it and it's gonna have to be good to go. So if it's, if we're not good afterwards, then there's not going to be any payment rendered.
Okay.
Well, here's.
Go ahead.
Here's my question I have to you, um, Addison. Um, and, and you probably wouldn't be able to answer this question, only maybe Andy could. I'm con, I'm concerned about the bid. I've, I've sat here and I listened to people or talk about the different bids. So when we put a bid out there, like for any one of the cities or roofs that needs to be done, do we not put, um, I'm asking, do we not put a specific specification that we want for a particular building? Or do we let different bidders decide what they want for us? And the reason why I say that is because if, if you're allowing different contractors, bidders to put whatever they want on our building, then how is it fair where some of them is giving us the most, the best quality of material and all that? And then the other one is just giving us enough to pass inspection. So how is that fair? And tell me how does that work?
So when, when it's clearly defined and we know what we're going to do, what gauge, like we're talking about twenty four gauge, it's mechanically seam roof or so on, like there was something out there and getting twelve or whatever contractors together and all agree on something, you just have a kind of little battle back and forth between them. And then one person, when they turn around, said everything they said, the other person said that is exactly what we bid, right? That, that's exactly what you had in a bid. They just said it in a different manner. But for, for what you're stating, see, there, there's some products that can be a certain gauge, but it's a different product and because of whatever testing requirements, the Florida Building Code said, yeah, you can do that. And there's others that are a different gauge, but a different shape, different design. And then it has to be a difference, but it, it varies so much in the, in the length. I mean, the in my opinion, probably the only thing that can, you can turn around and do there is that you have to make adjustments to, to add additional support because I was back in, back in the day, it was a longer uh like gap stretch in between the supporting beams, I guess you'd call it ribs or so that piece, it, it was allowed. Now, what they're going back up there and how they, they, they discuss in cob roofing, there's things that say, I'm gonna say fly, but there's things that go here uh, within the county and get approved. And there's things that, and somewhere else may not, like you probably wouldn't be able to do this in a day county or whatnot. But they, they reached out and covered, they said what they can do and and that's that. Um.
I mean, perhaps we could just have them, have them come here and explain it to us of why it's going to work.
I actually asked them to come, one of them, uh, Chase from Cob Roofing. I asked him to, if he could show up. I don't think he's here.
And. Or maybe ask Mister Longshore, the building department.
Well, yes, that was going to be the next thing is ask the building official to come as well and then.
Yeah, I can reach out to Mister Longshore.
The, my next question is, I'm pigging back off of what Shelley said. Um, what the difference is what? Close to eighty thousand dollars difference from the next bid? It makes me wonder. I'm just wondering. Are cheaper material being used? And that's eighty thousand dollars is a lot of money. So is, is cheaper material being used and that's why it's eighty thousand dollars less? I guess I would love to have Andy here too. So Andy can explain what is put in the bid. So we'll know what was put in the bid and the different bidders, what they bid on and what they providing us opposed to what we want.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be my next question is have Andy tell us exactly what everyone bid, if it was apples to apples, or if they were bidding some, just because, you know, you have ninety six thousand as the lowest and you have three nineteen is the highest.
Yeah.
That's worlds apart, you know, three X the cost. So were they putting in a new stru, uh, trust system and a whole new structure and engineered and yada, yada, yada.
I mean, I thought they were putting in a whole new roof on the whole place.
Well, the only thing, like even on the other one that we just approved, the difference in bids, and that one was all the same metal. So it was specified twenty four gauge, but those bids ranged from one forty one to three hundred and ninety.
Yeah.
Difference, and it was all for supposedly the same material.
Right. Yeah, and I think one of the issues here is that number one, this building is highly unusual, uh, and the fact that they're not all connected is probably because of the way the building codes are with having a, you know, quote unquote carport or a pavilion or, you know, this or that. This is an aluminum structure. This is not a normal, uh, you know, steel building or concrete build or anything like that. So it could be that it's legal to do it because it already exists and you're replacing it because of storm damage, you know? But that's something that the building official and the contractor should be able to explain to us. So I say we just postpone it until they can show up and explain it.
Yes, sir.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Two comments. I don't think that Andy is, um is not a building official. I don't think that he's going to be able to decipher what, you know, what building materials are needed. I think that, um, Mister Longshore would probably be a better one for that. I think that, um, Mr. Longshore would probably be a better one for that.
Right.
And another thing is we were given extra time on our insurance claim. Because this was going out to bid and because we were going to make a decision that, um, chances of us getting additional money are probably slim. So they're probably only going to pay ninety six thousand. The rest would have to come out of general fund.
Yeah. I mean, so, so long as the building official says, yes, you can do this. I don't see why we should be opposed to doing it because it is insurance money that that's going to be paying for it.
And the insurance company received all of the bids and looked at all of the bids and said that, um, this one was sufficient.
The insurance company did?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I mean, it, it is. We're looking at it. It's that I said, our bidding process, when everything comes in, you want to look and see, cause uh, I, I actually sat in the office, the Mark, Mark and myself, and we were looking at the different bids, wondering why. And it doesn't, when they submit, it doesn't give all the product of what they, what they had. So that, that's, and you just look at it, you know, like, oh, that's a number and they're going to do, they're going to follow the scope of work and what it says, and that's what they're going to do. Then you just take it for, for that. And but I mean, in the, in the future, maybe we, then we get into product reviews and I'm not a roofer. So if we get hire an engineer, then we gotta, you know, get into the fact, then it's just going to increase. Well, who, who determines what's best and that's where, what works best for the city? I mean, it's even, I, I don't know the conversation that was there, but he said it was good to go. It was ran by and I told him what we're doing. And it was a question of was this the hail damage? Yes, it was hail damage. It's replaced and
Yeah.
Said, go ahead and go ahead and replace it. I don't.
Jerry, uh, the, the comment that was made, um, disparaging to the, uh, contractor. What leadway does the council have to accept that and, and, and actually weigh it? When there's not, uh, very, you know, in other words, if there was five hundred dollars difference, would it be okay? But when there's a eighty thousand dollars difference, is it not okay? Is there any? Anything you can explain?
You're pretty much, um, required to take the lower, low bidder as long as they're, um, competent and, um, you know, their, their bid is responsive. And, um, you can weigh these types of things as to the competence and so on, but, um, uh, you've already got experience with this group already. I think you'd have a hard time saying if that, if those worked out right, that this one situation, which might be terrible for him, um, would cause you to change your mind with regard to this. It'd be a, a difficult decision for you to justify.
Would it be inappropriate to ask the building department if there's any reason why we shouldn't go forward with this company?
If you feel like you, 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 you need that to make the final decision, I, I mean, I think, um, insurance, as I mentioned, the insurance company is, uh, already said they like to bid, uh, they're going to pay for it. Um, it's got to be, it's got to pass the, the, um, approval at the end by the, by the building officials. If they do it wrong, it's not passed. They got to fix it until it does.
And would it be inappropriate to ask for an opinion from the building official seeing the contract here? And knowing the project, if it's going to pass?
Um, I don't see anything wrong with that. I mean, if you wanted, if you wanted to go to that step, additional step, that would save you the, the issue of arguing these people about, um, they're, um, not complying with the, the building code.
I'm just worried about the insurance money. Because if we don't move, we can lose that.
Yeah. But if it's not going to get approved by the building department, then it doesn't do us any good to do the roof.
So would, would they stop it before issuing a permit?
I don't know.
How long do we have, Melanie, with the insurance company?
So they are actually waiting for this meeting tonight to issue the check for the additional funds. Um, so going back to them and asking them, you know, we could have maybe approve it tonight contingent upon Mr. Longshore, um, giving the okay.
Yeah.
I guess my next question is, did the insurance company give us the timeframe? Like, did they give us a cutoff date?
So the, it was two years. I believe the hailstorm was April fourth of twenty twenty two. The cutoff was April fourth of twenty twenty four. So they've already given us two more months to get this figured out because they knew, they said, as long as we can see you're going out to bid and you're in the process. And, um, uh, Denise has spoke to them or emailed back and forth with them and to yesterday, I think we got an email that said that, um, they're in the final stages of approving the additional funding.
And the additional, you're talking about just the twelve thousand? We've already received the eighty eight?
Correct.
Yeah. Yes. Name and address.
Yeah, Florence, well, South Forest Avenue. Uh, one thing about metal roof, I just had a metal roof done a few months ago in my home. And I called five different contractors and the prices range almost double the price. One of the reasons, one of the, they baited a lot more expensive if the rivets, I mean, the screws were visible or not visible. That made double the price of my, uh, my roof. So, I mean, I don't mind seeing the screws. So it's up ahead. Uh, so by the way, I never got my house, my permit closed ever on my roof. I had to end up doing it after three and a half. They never did it. So I'm just giving you.
Thank you very much.
So Melody, if we were to go to the insurance company and tell them, okay, it didn't get approved for that price, but it did get approved for a little bit more, would they supplement us for that extra amount?
That's a question. I don't, I, maybe Denise can answer that, but we've already asked them for additional, um, funding for three different projects and they've been, um, really good about doing that for us. And with the timeframe, I'm, I'm not sure. We'd have to ask Denise what she, if she thought.
Certainly they'd understand that you, it's, it's all the decision of the board. I mean, if this one didn't get approved tonight, what would we have done anyway?
That's true.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah. And, and what, what typically happens is that they are doing this through underwriters, right?
Right.
So we go back to them. We say it's going to cost X amount. They have to go to all their underwriters and get approval on all different levels. And that's the process that they're in now for the extra twelve. So if we go back to them again, we're already beyond the two year time limit. And ask them to go back to the underwriters yet again. It, it just depends on whether or not they'll want to approve it.
Sure. Okay. You have a question?
Um, Arnold Wilson, fourteen twelve South Carolina Avenue. I'd like to speak on behalf of Cobb Roofing. They've done, uh, my brother's, uh, church. They've done all of our projects. And they're very, very competent. I've, I'm very, uh, just satisfied that, that happened to you, sir. But my experience with Cobb Roofing was really excellent.
So I just want to go over, cause I, I made it vague. So, so everyone knows. And the, in the spec, I don't know if you guys have it in front of you, but the RFP has said all work, all work shall be performed in a professional manner. And accordance with the Florida building code and industry standards, existing materials shall be removed and properly disposed of at the expense of the contractor. Roof attachment shall be removed and reinstalled by the contractor or subcontractor hired by the roofing contractor. Permit shall be applied for and obtained by the contractor. Permit fees shall be included in the bid. Contractor shall verify all measurements and quantities prior to the bid. Thirty, thirty year warranty is required. Other improvements, uh, will be described at the pre-bid conference. I mean, I put everything there on them. I, the, the method on how they came about, I don't know. They said that the conversation, but it's I, I can, I can reach out to Mr. Longshore to find out what that conversation was. And, and say, you know, it's what's going on. If they're not, then I'll pull it and we, I guess we could try to go with the next bid and I'll, I'll take that before coming back here and trying to find out. Um, if that, if that is, uh, everything's approved, product approval is fine. And, um, and that's that. We only got paid for that roof anyway, eighty four thousand dollars by the insurance company. So.
I, I like, um, Melody's suggestion about, uh, approving the extra amount contingent on approval of Mr. Longshore because I'm very concerned that staff has told us that the longer we delay, the better chance we won't not get anything extra. So, um, like you said, we've done benefits Cobb before. We've had, had a problem with it, but, uh, I, I'm really worried that if we wait another two weeks, that we might not get anything extra. And then if for some reason that bid isn't good, then we're stuck for the extra twelve thousand and so forth. So that would be my suggestion.
Well, it needs to be said too, that, uh, myself and McGuire will be, uh, abstaining because this is my cousin's company. So trying very hard to be middle of the road here.
And the only problem I have with it, Mary is this, is that like Ms. Ms. Shelley said, it's a big difference. It's a big difference. And I, and I would like to know why is the difference as large as it is. And it goes back to me, the material. Yes, we have voted many times to approve your family for many roofing done in this job. This was the first gentleman that has come to us with a complaint. I've heard no one else came before this board with a, with a complaint about this particular company, except for this man, um, young man. So I say that to say, because it's, it seems like Ms. Shelley and I both had some issues with the price and the difference. I want to know, I want to know what are the bidders material and what are they using? Is it the difference because of the material that they're using? Or, or, cause at this point, we don't know.
It's all things that we should be able to get answered and Andy should have the information.
Exactly. So.
He should be able to see the actual bid packets that were turned in and.
Well, what, uh, if they turn in and say, we have a PBR or this, that, da, 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 da. I'm not going to say, yes, that's better. That's worse. I'm not.
No, we're not, we're not asking for an opinion as to better or worse. We're just simply asking, did the other contractors bid this set of material?
If everybody said, yeah, let's use the same stuff, then it's just a matter of price.
Yeah, if in fact.
Everybody has a different opinion on what's best and that's, that's.
Yeah, we're not asking for your engineering opinion on what's best.
Right.
Just, if everybody bid the certain gauge pan on a certain square footage or whatever, then least we'll know.
So I'd like to ask that if we do an approval, we do it contingent upon that information and for, um, information from Eric Longshore regarding that. And I think that would cover our bases and it would make sure we're getting the information.
Yes, I agree.
Yep.
I spoke about Chris Downey, one oh nine East Main Street.
There you go.
Spoke a couple of weeks ago about this town, everything that we're doing. We're taking a lot of time, like we all, we're going to lose this insurance, but if we don't act quickly. So I would ask to second, uh, Christie's point that, you know, we're already past it. Why we waited over two years to even look at this when insurance money was there is beyond me. So now I'm frustrated that now we're going to miss out on another opportunity. The charm of this club next door with all these events being built around it. It's concerning me that we're not moving quick enough. And to Christie's point, I think we don't approve this. It'd be really hard to tell the people, this community that we got to pay ninety thousand dollars. Insurance could have paid most of it. So I asked for your experiencing and for your ears to hear me say clearly, we're taking too long on these projects that are crucial to this town. I don't understand it. I stand by it. I'm a great partner. I'm really concerned about where we're going.
So why, why did it take two years to get this all done?
That, I can't e- explain exactly why, but there was several issues with the, um, roofs out there. I know Jason, when we were going, going through everything that the insurance company paid, there were se- several roofs that Jason didn't feel like needed repair. Um, Dave Roberts was in charge of it before Jason came on.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where we stand.
Yeah. So we receive money, even if I think there's, I just asked Melody, even if we don't do anything, we're still have the eighty four thousand dollars there. So if the next one, you know, maybe if we miss a deadline, we miss out on, you know, twelve. What's that?
Twelve thousand.
Yeah, there's twelve thousand dollar difference. We may miss out on that, but then, you know, if it comes in and you know, we have to do.
Jason, I misunderstood what you said.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. A large amount like that, they're going to request that back. If it's like five or six thousand dollars, they're going to say, no, we don't. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have another scheduled meeting for next week, right?
Mm-hmm.
Why, why can't we just table to get those two opinions next week and take the rest?
Yeah. Uh, the only other option would be an approval based on either Eric Longshore's opinion or uh, the specs of what the others bid or, or both.
Yes.
Um, so any.
That'll work for me too.
I mean, if it's, if it's cheaper material that they're using and another hurricane comes along, we're going to be right back in the same position we are.
It's an aluminum pan roof and they're putting back an aluminum pan roof. So I don't know if you've ever seen the hurricane pictures of the aluminum pan roofs, but they very routinely get wrapped around whatever structure they're attached to. There's a good chance that if we have a bad hurricane, that roof's going bye-bye.
Yep.
It's all there is to it.
Our purchasing manual says that with an ITB will, we will take the lowest bid. Just, I don't know what the repercussions are for not following that, but.
And I would say that it would be, you know, I, I was going to mention during my city manager's report, back to back meetings. So subsequent Mondays is difficult for staff because we have to do a lot of work to prep for that step. So making a motion contingent upon whatever information we need to get gives us time we can. Eric's going to come. Take your questions. He's on his way.
Okay.
Tonight.
Perfect.
That is amazing.
We'll postpone until later in the meeting when he arrives. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Yes, I am.
All right, perfect. Stay tuned. Item number twelve, this will be discussion for solid waste services.
I'll get up to the mic over there. Okay. So back in, I believe it was March, uh, we were discussing the, the grapple truck and how we go about the collection. And then taking a look overall, uh, what we were doing and some recommendations were made. Uh, you asked me for recommendations of what I thought. So I've been here roughly about four months now, taking a look at, uh, the flyer that was put out, plus what we're able to do with the staffing that we have. So, a- and, uh, as well, uh, we're going into budget season and kind of getting a good understanding from the council on which direction that you all want to lean as far as like the services and how we go about doing the services. So I, um, are you bringing up the PowerPoint?
It's loading.
All right. Do you, um, you want to wait for that till the, takes a little bit.
It does take a little bit.
We, I mean, we have the packet.
Yeah, the packet?
Yeah.
Okay. So on our trash collection, I just go over and for the people that are listening, it may not know what, uh, history is. So we, we pick up trash twice per week. Depends on what zone you're in. You're either getting picked up Monday and Thursday or Tuesday and Friday. Currently on our, uh, you know, we're issued a, a one ninety six gallon cart. So it's a large size cart that just got wheels and we wheel it around. Um, that's, that's standard. Now you also, you can, you can call in and request a smaller one if you like, and we'll take it out. No, no extra charge. We'll swap out the carts. There was something where, you know, we have serial numbers on the carts and we kept them in. We did a like financial changeover for our financial software and some of those numbers, we're just trying to get those back. But if there, if the carts are broken due to wear and tear, we can replace them. No extra charge by the city. We just got to go out there and get them. Now these carts, when we order them, we have to order them in advance and they get, uh, branded into the, the card itself. It gets, it gets, uh, a number and it gets the, you know, the, the city logo that's, that's there. And then for special events, uh, we do, uh, free collection. From, you know, just as far as the, the, the garbage that's dumped, like we don't charge per can or anything like that. They ask for, uh, two yard dumpster, we help out, or you know, four yard dumpster, we help out, we drop it off out there, we pick it up, no problem. Just part of the, part of the deal. The only thing we would charge, if anything, would just be the time of the, the drivers overtime. So to get a good understanding of the sizes, you see how, and, um, go to a slide. I'm on the garbage cans, Chris. So the thirty five gallon, it's a smaller size. We have those, those are less of a cost to the city. It's not, not a very big cost in the cost of the garbage cans. I think it's like a roughly in between a small to the large, like a fifteen dollar difference. So, um, what you see there holds thirty five gallons, two to three, uh, bags. The other's four to five, seven to eight. So depending what the, the family size you have, and some of this, I'm kind of setting up what I'm going to talk about later on. So these are the different sizes. Now, the, the next slide, please. Our yard debris collection. It's, uh, it's, we do, we pick this up once, uh, once every other week, Monday or Tuesday. Currently with bulk, it's on the same. So it's Monday and Tuesday on the yard debris and Thursday and Friday on the bulk. Our staff doesn't work. It's a couple of people that work on Wednesdays, but they just, they work, uh, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, uh, largely as a whole. So as you can see here, there's a question, uh, we had, came up before about being bundled and whatnot. I mean, I know that's a very good looking picture of how it was. I was off a gaster. I mean, I know that's a very good looking picture of how it was. I was off a Gaster, Gaster Road where people were. Putting their things together. I know sometimes it looks a little bit different. Than a staff if right now, if it's two yards. And or, or close to it, then staff will get out and just pick it up and throw it in the, the truck. If it's a little bit larger, then we try to, we hit up the routes with a, a, a garbage truck picking up the trash. A small, uh, another truck picking up, if it's yard debris, another truck picking up what can get, uh, picked up by hand. And then going around the same areas, uh, a grapple truck with picks up what, what needs a little bit more, you know, a little bit bigger size. Bulk waste is the same, along the same lines, two yards in size. Uh, just like the landscaping debris is an extra ten dollars. So if there's, if it's four yards, we give it, the two's free. It's only paying twenty dollars in difference. Hopefully, uh, everyone, uh, did they get a chance to see? Did you all get a chance to see the, the tags that, that we put out? So if, if we see that there, what we do is we try to, we tag it, we put a little check, contact, you know, this is, this is what's what. Contact the, the city. And we're doing something where we kinda staff, when they see it, they write down and say, okay, this is. Uh, for, there's like, we, we already tried to give an estimate that it's four yards. Cuz the customer's not really, you know, how many yards it is. That way, when they call in, well, we looked at it's roughly four yards of debris. It's gonna be twenty dollars. And that way, the, the, the customer or resident, just say, customer can know. What, what it is and they, they can agree to the charges that then a work order will be for the pick, uh, to pick it up. So an issue that we do have that, that we've seen is that, and we were kinda operating under something that was told to us. Turned around, uh, we thought that, uh, illegal dumping was that, that fee was given. I guess the tipping fee was waived by the county, but after, uh. Randy LaBelle, the code of, uh, court enforcement supervisor came back and said, no, that's just for the county employees. That's, that's waived, uh, for their, their collection, not, not for ours. So we have to, we have to eat that cost, so. If it's illegal dumping. And even to the point where it's on an empty lot, if we can't prove that on that empty lot. It was, you know, if we see the, the trees that were cut and I'm an arborist, so I can, I can look and say, yeah, that's the same tree. And very consistent time, the whole deal, then yes, we can, we can charge them. But if it's not the same, we don't know who to go to. We just, we don't want to say you look bad, so we just end up going and, and, and picking it up. Landscaping debris goes out to the, our yard debris site and we dump it there. There's no tipping fee involved. And, uh, that's that. So. Now I get into, um. It's a, can you go back, uh, can you go back a slide, please? Thank you. So on this, this is in our code and with the manner collection. So the manner collection being how we pick it up. And the rates for the garbage is saying that we, we need to, we should be looking at this annually. So kinda like you asked me to say what's going on, see where we are, uh, financially as far as picking up things and. You know, how does the city look? Maybe there's suggestions, maybe we come up with something better. So that's, that's why we're here today to, to go over what we should be doing. What can we agree upon and with the input from the council? Many of you live here. That it's being that you live here, you know how the place looks, you know where the garbage lies. Many of our, our problems do lie within. Uh, the empty lots. So that is a, that is an issue for us. So by going off of this code, looking at manner collection. It's, it's what level of service? What, what do we wanna provide? Do we wanna, do we wanna provide? A higher level of service? Where the higher level service comes, you know, costs or service cycles. You know, do, you know, there's places that pick up once, once, uh, you know, once a week, we pick up twice a week. Um, you know, that doesn't mean that the volume of garbage goes down, but that just may mean that we don't have to go service that can and pick it up as much. Now, your tipping fees, you, you don't, you don't lose anything for tipping, uh, fees because that, I mean, you don't gain anything. Cuz the, the amount of garbage, everyone still creates the same amount of garbage, whether you pick it up once or twice a week. It's just manpower. And with the way the city is growing and is projected to grow based off of the. The service that the, the letters for service that's coming our way that we know all the developments are coming. Maybe you wanna do something that's, that's more efficient, right? So that's something you need to look at.
Excuse me, Jason, excuse me. Mayor, can I make a suggestion? Not to cut you off, Jason. You invited, um, Miss Long here. Longshore, would you probably wanna ask him, cuz he probably don't wanna go through our presentation? I mean, I'm not sure how long, you know, he took the opportunity to come. And I'm just wondering if he wanna go through all this field or is he?
I'm okay, I'm okay to put it on pause. Can we, does anything have to happen, Jerry, for that or no? Good. I'll, I'll step aside.
Okay, appreciate this. Mr. Longshore. We have a question for you. If you would, just give your. If you will, just give your name and office for the.
Eric Longshore Highlands County Building Official.
Yes, sir.
For the record.
All right, so, uh, bid came in by, uh, Cobb Construction or Cobb Roofing, uh, on the. Senior Services Building. Senior Services Center and it involves a pan roof. So there's a pan roof there. Currently, they're talking about replacing that pan roof. Question is, will that be approved by the, uh, building department if that is done?
As far as the Florida Building Code is concerned, unless it is damaged by wind. If it has proven to not, if it has proven to fail. Bring it up to code.
Okay.
As long as it's not damaged by wind, and my, my understanding is it's hail damage.
Yes.
Put it back the way it was.
Okay.
Building code, building code says unless, if it's proven that it's gonna stand there. Put it back the way it was.
Okay, so will there be a standard permit process? They apply for a permit and it's?
Simple enough.
Okay.
I, actually, with all the hail damage we had, I wasn't even issuing permits to replace pan roofs.
I see.
But I've had a couple of them call me and I said, if the city wants it, I'll issue it.
Okay.
But it's, it's a, it's a, it's pan replacement, not a whole lot to it.
There was another, uh, issue that the bid amount they put in was roughly ninety-six thousand dollars. The closest one to them was almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So it was about half. Is there any reason, and I, I believe you had a conversation with, was it Chase or somebody at Cobb Roofing?
Chase, Chase has wanted to call.
Was there anything about what they were planning to do that would be a problem at all or?
Nope.
Okay. There was also a question of the quality of work, uh, that was done by Cobb Roofing by one of the citizens. Is there anything in your opinion that would prevent us from moving forward with handing in the contract for this?
Not in my opinion.
Okay. Is there any other questions staff had or council has for?
I, I had a question for Mr. Longshore. Mr. Longshore, I was one of the ones that asked a question about the difference in the, the bidding amount. And I take it you probably know a little something about bidding?
Little bit.
Little bit. So. When Avon Park put the bid out, that's Andy Mogul, that's I got. And we, I don't know what he, what his specification he puts out. And so the question I'm asking is. The re, is, is it could be the reason why the bidding amount is so far in apart because of the material that's being used? Or no, this is just something that the bidder felt like he wanna bid for this project. Because it was kinda, we talking eighty thousand dollars different. And so I would have thought, I don't know nothing about bidding now. You more and more expert than I am. I would have thought that we would have put out some type of, um, specification that we're looking for, even though we're not expert. And therefore we'll get a more honest bids in line with each other. Opposed to this person going out buying their material, which it could be cheaper. And then the man that bid the highest, he's putting, he's putting the best material on there. How would we know?
There's only, there's only two options on those pan roofs. They make them in an O-two-four thickness and they make them in an O-three-oh thickness. I know Chase, talking to Chase, I said, make sure you put O-three-ohs on it because. That roof, that roof was actually built by, by my brother. So I know what he put on there.
Okay.
And I said, put O-three-ohs back on it. And Chase said, that's what he had, that's what he had ordered. That's what he had figured. So it's just a difference in the thickness of the, of the metal.
Difference in the thickness. So here's my last question to you. Those high bids. They just high bids. That's all they are cuz they don't take all of that. Come on, tell us. I'm asking, I, I'm asking, they're just high bids.
I can tell you from my wife being involved with the school board that, you know, they'll get a bid for three million dollars for a building. And somebody came in at one point nine million.
Okay.
Mr. Longshore, I have a question. How, how many of the contractors reached out to you personally to ask you this roofing question?
Uh, Chase called me and I forget I had another, somebody else called. I don't, I can't recall who it was. It's been, been a while ago.
Could some of the reason be that the other companies are farther away, uh, another county? And then they're charging extra for driving distance and so forth?
Could be.
Or it could be they even.
Could be.
More money, right?
Could just be the local people.
Yep.
Doing it cheaper. It could be somebody saying, hey, I'm working for the government.
Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Longshore?
No, so no additional bracing or anything like that. It's required or recommended. I know that was one of the questions that they put in, put out.
Not, not by Florida Building Code.
As far as the span.
Florida Building Code says if it was there, unless it blows down, then you gotta build it back to current code.
But we should ensure that it's the O-three, three-oh or whatever you said.
O-three, O-three-oh thickness.
O-three-ohs.
Okay.
I mean, that's probably what's, that's probably what the insurance company went by, too. And that's, and that's simple enough for me to, if we do the inspections, we'll, we'll, we'll assure that for you. We'll issue the permit, we'll do the inspections on it.
Okay.
That's what I.
Very good.
I told Chase, I said, I normally I haven't, but. Since it's for the city.
Sure.
We'll, we'll issue the permit for it and we'll, and we'll double check that for you. Thank you.
Mr. Longshore, thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate you coming short notice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Actually lives in Avon Park.
Yeah. Well, and backing up to that bid pack to see if there is any stipulation of the thickness.
Yes, it was.
There was?
Yeah.
Do you see it in front of you?
Yeah, it was twenty-four gauge.
That, that was the other bid. That was the other job.
I think the second one was too.
I don't think the second one.
The gutters and everything else were twenty-six gauge.
No, the second one didn't have any of that.
Uh, yeah, so we've got interlocking pans. We've got a couple of different ones. Yeah, so in attachment three, it just has the, um. Two rib. O-two-four has five rib, O-two-four, two rib, O-three-oh, and five rib, O-three-oh.
So it specifies the O-three-oh anyway then, already.
You can put in the contract.
Sure. Yeah, I was just trying to see if their actual bid stipulated that. I'm not seeing it. So, uh, the council could approve it, uh, based off of, um, that thickness if they wish. Jerry, in listening to all this, is there anything else that you can think of that they would wanna stipulate?
No, not that I can think of. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, the bid by Cobb and the amounts stated.
I second it.
Okay, does that, uh, stipulate that it has to be the O-three-oh in your motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Three oh six.
It's O-three-oh thickness. All right, so you still wish to, uh, second that motion?
I do.
Okay, so we have a motion to second. As I said, uh, myself and Councilwoman McGuire will be abstaining. It's very related to this individual. Any other questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
I abstain.
Councilmember McQur.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
I'll abstain as I'm related to the applicant.
Motion passes.
Uh, that's the same.
Yes, I'm also related to that.
Thank you. All right, Jason, back up.
Back at it.
We left off on two fifty-five.
It's good news. Thank you. All right, so, um. This going into, you know, personnel, we also talk about equipment, what we're gonna need. You know, what, uh, you know, if you use more automated equipment, you need less people. But as I said, we are getting. We are getting plenty of calls for service frequently. We don't have many calls. Come pick up my garbage can. We're no longer gonna li, live here. And we don't need trash service anymore. So we have many, plenty of people moving to Avon Park. Um, the redundancy aspect, we do operate with, uh, we have some people that can fill in as drivers. And we have some equipment that we can use, but it's, it's not that many. When you start looking into, uh, days off, vacation, things along those lines. It's, you start, you start getting thin. So there's such things you have to look at there. Uh, what, what, what I mentioned here with the shared assets and personnel, what that means is there's, uh. You know, some of the employees, like myself, their, their budget, like the, the costs for the employees are split, say mechanics. There, uh, certain amount comes out of the water funds, water and sewer, certain, you know, they, they spread across the funds when you perform. A shared, uh, job, right? So you, we have mechanics that are consistently working on roughly, I, I, I guessed and then they told me. So we were almost in, in line, lockstep. The two mechanics work on waste equipment about seventy percent of their time. So also talking about area cleanliness, how, 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 how clean does the council want it? How, what's, what's the tolerance level, right? So what's the threshold? You know, the place looks great, this place looks bad, you know, maybe this area needs some more attention, this one not so much, we're good to go. And of course, public education, getting it out there, whatever we decide. And, uh, you know, so everybody knows. So, next slide, please. So this is pulled from your budget. This is one of the things I looked at here when I was coming, coming up here. And it was a little, just a little bit concerning. If you see there, uh, you see the red. The red line says thirty thousand, one forty. Uh, we basically took our sanitation, uh, budget that we had and that was the money we had in reserves. So the thirty thousand dollars we had in the bank plus what was coming in in revenues and, uh, it was. And the budget, it was approved to take that down to zero. So enterprise fund's supposed to sustain itself, try to stay away from the general fund. You don't wanna be taken out of there if all possible. So it's something you gotta end up doing budget amendments and. Nobody really wants to, uh, deal with that. So, um. Don't change again, please. So that's some of the largest expenditure increases that we've seen. Is, uh, the equipment repair. Dude, let me, I wanna pass something out. Pass that out, please, Chrissy, the, the one, uh, the, the package that I, I gave you, it's, uh. You want to pass it?
Thanks.
So in here, there's, there's several different, uh, line items, but if you take a look and you see, um. You look at the equipment repair, that's one of the largest fluctuations. The, the machinery, uh, repair and maintenance, we were budgeted. I think it was one thirty, hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred. So the, the amount that we're, you know, that we spent is significant. We're already at seventy-one percent for the year. Plus there's some additional that's, that's hitting across that line item. Our, our equipment, our, our fleet's older, so as we, as we go along, it's going to be, um. As machines get older, they cost more to repair. Next slide, please. And if you look up here, the last three years, our revenues versus expenses, I took this also directly out of the. Out of the budget book. You see that there's, in FY twenty-two, the expenses were two hundred nine thousand. Then it was almost, uh, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for FY twenty-three. And then two hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference. So over the years, it's been a significant amount of bu, of money. That's been coming out of, um, you know, that we've. That's been coming out of um, you know, that we've been losing it going down that should have been. Addressed by by rates, likely rate changes, you know, to so we can bring our revenues up. Cause the expenses now, what triggered those specific expenses? Some are sometimes it's a an equipment, a piece of equipment that was purchased. And. Those uh, you know, the the newer your equipment, the the less expenses that you have. Our tipping, I will note that our tipping fees are along the lines where they, which is basically the the. The garbage and the bulk waste that we collect, it is in line with what we budgeted, so that's not bad at this time. Next slide, please. So I went out, I know they have rate studies and and whatnot, but I I spent some time looking at codes, looking at. Different ordinances, looking at websites and going around to look at similar sized. Cities and seeing where we lie and what our service and trash collection is. As you see, the the next lowest um. Uh rate was Highlands County at eighteen sixty five. That's roughly three dollars and sixty five cent difference and they only have one collection per week as far as uh as far as garbage pickup. I'll I'll make an, I'll make a note. Oh, let me see, let me make sure. I'll get into that. Okay, so. I know you probably have some time to take a look at this, so I'll go on to the to the next slide. I grabbed this because a a city that actually that did a rate study. This was City of Tampa. They had some pretty good information. I know we're not a city as far as of of a a large city like like Tampa or Miami or Miami Dade County. I do understand that. But you can see there where the lowest one on here is twenty eight fifty nine, which is significant uh difference. And and if you look at the number. That runs along that ten dollar right there. I mean, it doesn't mean ten dollars, but you'll see that's the number of collections that they have per week. Next slide, please. So do we talk about a rate adjustment? Um, you know, that's that's for us to discuss, but as you can see, from twenty nineteen to twenty four, and I pulled this from. That that uh rate study that was performed by the City of Tampa. See the automated collection vehicles are up thirty five and a half percent. Which is significant as you you look down there and see that now automatic collection vehicles around four hundred eighty nine thousand dollars. Give or take, there's certain contracts, but you can look right around four fifty, four eighty nine, you start getting into um. Your warranties and whatnot. And then the dumpster, the dumpster increases. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry, Jason, can you go back to the next slide? What are you saying here that is cheaper to do? The hands-on dumping opposed to the automatic?
No, no, I didn't get into that there. That's just stating that the art, the the vehicles itself, which are uh. The that the that you see the price up there is is four hundred eighty nine thousand dollars. It's gone up in the last five years, a hundred and twenty thousand. A hundred and tw- uh twenty nine thousand dollars. That's just stating things go up in prices. Everyone knows, everyone knows that how much inflation really affected, especially equipment. I guess I I don't have a long, you know, I don't have a long tenure here, so I don't. I I was told that there was a a decrease in rates. I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, but. I mean, when things are going up, you don't go down. And if you go down, then you have a problem. And what you see, like in the City of Tampa study. You see that there's a a line graph and it kind of goes in what they're projecting, what the what the rate adjustments be. And then you get to a point where your rate is above, you know, your expenses is is slightly less than what your revenues are for what you're planning on doing. So the good thing is for us. Is that we don't have landfills and things of that nature. We do have a yard waste landfill, but I'll tell you this. There's not a, there's the piece of equipment that's out there to landfill is a borrowed piece of equipment. And that borrowed piece of equipment comes from the Public Works, which is uh the general fund, the streets, and it has an attachment on there. And it's not meant for the operation as does, meant for clearing lots, you know, they go in, they're kind of overgrown, they go in there with a, it's got the thing on the front. And it goes, it's it's a like a mulcher, kind of. It goes in and eats everything up and then it kind of just mulches it down. We're taking dry debris. Dry debris doesn't chip up well. It doesn't get, it doesn't get grabbed. And basically this machine, it gets in there and it starts working. And then when it works, it creates like a whirlwind of dust and then it just clogs up and overheats. It's an I, when I seen it, I I said, this can't be working too well. And I asked the the person running it and. Almost every single time I go out there, the equipment's not there. The guy's just taking notes of that, making sure that the debris is clean and the debris and it's piling up to the point where. I have to either look at getting a tub grinder or a commercial, someone of the debris contractors to come in quarterly or semiannually and just get out there and chip everything. Or I found something that works really good. And they're using it in many different areas and it's as much safer. It'll actually, it's like a burn box. And it's varied, uh you can basically put everything and create it with a char, something like a like a biochar, you could use it. You know, we can give it to the orange grower or whatever and um but it it gets rid of the debris. So even though we chip it chip it up with another. Say we decide to chip it up, it still could be kindling for a fire and cause cause different problems. Um this way, it's all permitted, it's permitted by DEP. I just have to go out and go take a look at it. It's 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 got a good price, the diesel, like the amount of fuel that's required to run it is very cheap and I think that's an option, but. I mean, how are you, we're do- doing it right now, it's with no equipment, no shed. All you got out there is a porta potty and a guy with a a clipboard. That's that's how we're operating, so you you everyone's aware, right? Next slide, please. So what kind of, you know, looking at, you see some of our numbers here, you got the total resident, like the where you really get your bang for your buck is the. Is the re- your residential, because it's the that's the volume of customers. So when you make a a an increase there. This is, this is what what would happen. So on, if you're looking at six thousand, roughly six thousand customers. A dollar increase per month is about six thousand dollars, right? So you go times twelve is seventy thousand dollars a year. So you 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 know, you kind of the life of a truck, more or less, is almost like a dollar. Dollar some change per person to 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 get in a an additional truck and and go along. Um and then if you, but if you make and and you see the numbers there, like what what's the difference? You know, how much, how much additional? Uh revenue could you could you get? So if you look down, just say currently we get a one point. Uh zero seven one uh million dollars, it goes up to one point two eight seven, you know, it's roughly two hundred. About two hundred sixteen thousand dollars. So if we were to make a a three dollar adjustment. That would be your um. I apologize when I said the the one dollar get you a truck. It it's um. Yeah, yeah, that's about right. Dollar dollar would get you a truck, but the three dollars would would take you to two hundred. Would take you two hundred ten thousand dollars, which is like two years would buy you a truck outright. So if you were to kind of do that, you would go along. This is just information, it's not saying what I suggest. This is just. What an impact would be if you were to make that that decision. Next slide. These are only alternatives, not that I'm making a suggestion. Okay, because I I know this is a a sensitive subject, but just saying some of the things that we do to cut cost. You cut service cycles. Okay, that's uh how many times you pick up. You cut service quantities, uh you know, we're giving two yards. Then we say, sorry, you know, you're gonna have to pay to pick up. Yeah, if you, you know. Uh push capital expenditures, that we were gonna maybe get a truck, we pushed that for another year. You saving capital, but then you lose out in your service and um. You know, maybe the your your equipment cost to repair. Personnel reduction, we don't we don't really want to talk about that, but that's a cost-cutting measure. Efficiency measures, uh we can co- we we can consolidate services. So uh I think a good point was brought up by Councilwoman Taylor about uh, you know, it's like, what if somebody has four yards of debris? Well, instead of doing, having them sit on it, maybe we just do one time at at four yards uh per uh per month. Because they, you know, otherwise. You know, I I look and see what people do in general, like they're not, they usually don't create that much at a time, it's kind of sporadic. So if someone goes out there and decides, I'm gonna trim back my trees. Well, if you only have two yards, you can't do too much, but if you get four yards, then it's not too bad. And then you could do that once uh, you know, once a month. And it's pretty simple. That's kind of where where I was at in um in Fort Lauderdale where I lived. That's what they did and it it worked out well. Another another efficiency measure is uh provide drop-off areas. So we provide areas that people could just come drop them off. They have drive-up ramps where you can just drop the dump right into the the dumpster itself. And you'll find a central location. We look into something like that, that's something we may be able to do. Um it it wouldn't be able to be like uh putrescent, like waste like that, but you can do something with bulk, you know, it wouldn't smell. Or anything along those lines. And then maybe get it to where they can go drop off to the the debris, the yard debris, as long as they had. You know, a driver's license, we know they weren't a commercial entity out there running a yard business and charging the the resident, but then going out there. Uh bulk and yard debris by appointment appointment only uh before, I don't need you to change slides, but some of the things that were in there, it's by appointment. There are cities that that run it by appointment, so you call in. You know, you don't, if you have stuff out there and you don't have an appointment, then code's gonna come by and knock on your door. And tell you, you know, if we say, hey, listen, they don't have an appointment, they have their stuff out, then it would go that way. And automation, you know, auto- automation is is cheaper in in many areas and that's basically. Using trucks that require less manpower. So the other alternative is increased revenues. So we raise rates or we provide a a tiered rate structure, meaning maybe the garbage can. That you have someone that's on a fixed income and. You know, you you're only, you're only using, you know, you're by yourself, you're only using uh, you know, maybe a bag or two. You know, every three days, because because it's three, four days. Maybe you don't, you don't pay the same amount as somebody who's who's using, you know, a full-size can dumping six bags, like. I know myself, I only use like a bag. I almost feel bad putting it out there, right? So maybe maybe we do something along those lines. You know, you could charge for bulk, charge for yard debris. Um what we're doing in some of the larger communities is that we're talking about and kind of holding off on one of the the things we're doing now is that the the. We're we're requiring the larger um communities to go ahead and give us the the money upfront. That way we can purchase the cans and have them ready or stockpile them somewhere where they're at. And then when the residents come in, they go and put it in into their uh their house. Uh charge for special events per cart, per dumpster. So if the special event's gonna see, you know, like they're they're gonna require a four-yard dumpster, a eight-yard dumpster, then the event pays for that size dumpster. And then the other is uh the illegal dumping. Some of the signs I haven't put out yet, because I don't, you know, we see a large amount of legal dumping. I at least what I've seen since I've been here. Is very hard if we can't put our finger on who's doing it. And I ride around on weekends, nights to try to find out. Why the, who these people, who who the individuals are who are dumping on other people's lots. I know maybe in the past it was said, hey, there's a community dumping areas, we'll buy our code and what's been there is that's not allowed. Um so where that fine says something and then. You know, it's it's a significant fine to where if you get caught, you're gonna, you're gonna pay it. I I think I'm I'm not sure if it's five hundred, is it? Randy, is it, you know what the fine is? Is it five hundred or do you happen to know?
But it's also a crime, so if you refer them for criminal prosecution, they can, you get a couple of those and and that's gonna. Put a deck way back. And there's also uh statutory fines that they can charge. We can't, but they can.
Yeah. So they uh, and we had talked about that. And so there's there's different things that I can do to get out there to try to make it look better. I can put some signs out, we can. You know, we could change the operation, um you know, and and what this is on the discussion is what we go about. You know, I I personally feel that. Operationally, it doesn't work out well for us having Thursday and Friday to pick up bulk and then if for some reason a truck goes down, which happens frequently. That. Our makeup time now runs into the next week. And and when we do that, we don't, we don't have much leniency to go out there and service somebody. So say we didn't get to your house. And it's mu- you know, it's it's Friday. Then someone's sitting out there looking and say, how come my stuff hasn't gotten picked up? And when are they gonna come? Then we basically wait till Monday. Uh to go to to start looking at some of those areas that we didn't complete and go back out there. And then by that time, some people take a look at it and like. Oh, it must be next week. And then they just throw their stuff out again, you know, and and just getting to a point where. We have a setup where, you know, we're doing what works best for us, it's the most efficient way and. Um making sure everybody knows we're either by magnets that we send out, which I'm sure. Did it, have have y'all seen the magnets before with uh, I have one there, by the way. I may have. I but I don't have copies of it. I just something I brought, I brought from my house. So like, it looks like this. I don't, what's the? Let me pass. So the magnets, you see on there, there's certain areas, you kind of identify it. But you see there, there's just one pickup per month. You know, having, the more times that you have pickups, the more frequency, the more the more time that that garbage is gonna be out in the in the street. That's just the way it is. Um, you know, and then trying to make sure everybody hits that twenty-four hours before, it's kind of difficult. People, you know, they get to stuff, they put it there. They know no one's gonna come by and tell them, get it up, because we're not trying to. Rule the city with an iron fist or anything like that, which, you know, would you want to make the place look better? So uh I mean, I have some suggestions, but I'd like to hear from you all what you what you think uh would work best or what's what's? How how do I proceed as your as your public works director and and identifying?
Okay.
What we need to do.
Couple of questions. Um how much from other funds are we currently getting? I know that we're uh getting revenues from other, like water, water, wastewater is going into the sanitation fund or solid waste fund.
It's, this year it was three hundred and two thousand from water wastewater.
Okay.
And I believe that's for um the the disposal of from the bio solids. Is that what that's for?
It's just to balance the budget. It might equal that number, but and then we get the loan payment um from the airport.
So all total, if the solid waste is going to uh sustain itself, you're talking about roughly six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional revenues. Realistically, what you'd want to do long term. And I'm assuming your goal long term is to for it to do that, for it to self-sustain, is that right?
Yes, of course, the enterprise fund.
So I guess the the real question is, is the council um. In the mood or at least open-minded to looking at raising rates? That's the biggest question, because that's the most direct way, fastest way to. Get us where you need to go. So. Whether it be a dollar, two dollars, five dollars a month, is the council open to that at least?
I I'm open to that because one, I I don't think the residents really want to see a difference in their. Residential garbage picked up. I think that uh we like and a lot of us need to twice a week. And uh I mean, there may be some people that could do without and and that's a possibility, but I. I think that my own personal opinion, I think twice a week is great because. Even you have a small amount, if you forget to put it out one time, you're gonna get it picked up the the second time that week, so that's good. As far as picking up the yard waste, uh I'm, I have a lot of trees in my yard, like a. a lot of trees in my yard, like a lot of people do. And you know, sometimes I have some and sometimes I have a lot, but usually I don't have more than two yards. And as far as that's concerned, I could, I'd be happy with once a month pickup on the, on the yard waste, whether it's through the wrecker truck or through the claw or clam truck. I think we could decrease that, but uh, other than that, I, I think we have to do what's best for the citizens and the city and to keep it clean. And, and most people I've talked to, they're willing to pay for, for the service. And they want to keep our city clean. So I don't think we raise rates that I know of and ever. And so if that's a possibility, I would look into that. And now that we bring it up, it's gonna probably be in the news and get a lot of citizens between now and the, we'll start the budget project to be able to come up and express their opinions. But I definitely think we need to keep residential and maybe business pickup twice a week. And I, I could go to lower on the, on the yard waste to once a month, even with the amount of trees wasted I have that uh, sometimes you, you know, even if you end up with three or four yards, if you make a call to get it picked up if you want, or if you could wait for once a month, the laws doesn't bring you a fine, then I'm good with that.
Jason, I think some areas that obviously we could look at would be, you, you mentioned on the equipment, having more efficient equipment or equipment that doesn't break down as often, we'll say. So something I'd be looking for is realistically, what is the total cost of the mechanics for just the solid waste? I don't know if that, if that's the hundred and forty thousand that you have in here, or was that total for all the mechanics? The other question would be, you mentioned on the equipment of buying equipment outright versus, uh, you know, potential lease or some other type of payment program. Obviously we would need to refer to your better judgment as to trying to select some of that and narrow it down, because it's a very broad subject. But it's certainly, you see what equipment we have and you see what we need. So I would look to you to come up with the uh, best plan for getting us the best equipment to do the job for the least amount of money, obviously. Then the yard debris, um, as Jim said, less often yard debris, I don't think would necessarily be a problem. I think less often garbage pickup would definitely cause a lot of complaints. It would be a problem for a lot of people. How we're actually dumping that yard debris, where we're, where we're dumping it, you and I spoke a little bit about that. Um, whether or not we end up, you know, taken to a different site, or we get a better grinder, or some of the other things that you mentioned, or the burner. Certainly, all those things with actual dollar and cents changes would be something I'd be looking for. And then if there's any other efficient place to, uh, to take our dumping, whether it, I know that we take it to Hines County currently, we've taken it other places. Take a look at that again, see what's around, see if there's any better place to do it. And if it makes any sense for us, that would be my suggestions. Yeah, we got some hands in the back there. You, you want to take questions right now?
No, just in a, in a, in a second please. So the, just to go over what you're looking at here, um, you see our, our average fleet age is the 2018. That's, that's what we actually use. So the amount of trucks that we use a given day, it could be six, seven trucks, somewhere around there. So if you, if you look at that, you know, that's, that's where we are. These, these trucks, it varies. But after five years, that's where you start seeing the significant repair cost come into play. And especially the fact that they gotta drive a a long distance to, to get to where they have to dump, that, that adds, adds some problems. So that's where we're seeing our issues.
And to be clear, you said we run six, seven trucks per day?
Yeah. If you look at the, if you look at that, that kind of orangish highlighted section that you see there, that's kind of what we run per day. So um, what we do is we have, um, we have a, a route sheet every day that we, that's submitted by the, the solid waste supervisor. Who says what trucks are aware, what route and what type of work they're doing, who's the driver? And all that goes, goes forward to us. So that, that you see there, um, those are all the trucks that we use. And then the ones that you see that says, that's like white and it says front loader Mac. It's like kind of underneath the, the top three yellow, you see where that front loader is there? So that one that's there in white, that's a, that's a backup. The other three there, they need to go to auction. We have them, but they need to go to auction. And then if you look at the rear loaders, the two in yellow, they have to go to auction. And then the other one that's in white, that's kind of like the, the backup. So if we have an issue, they, they jump on that and do that. Uh, you know, sometimes we reach out, I've, I've heard that, you know, they, they reached out in the past to other cities when we're in a bind. And we asked to borrow a truck. They, they could do the same thing with us sometimes if, if another city needed help. It's kind of what we do. Um, but if you start getting into, you know, where you need to get a rental for a month, that can run anywhere from eight to eleven grand, depending on the type of truck that you want to get. And they, they, there is companies that do that and it, that's not, it's not bad. If you look at it throughout, throughout the year, whatever, but if you get something that's significant, like hydraulic cylinders or engine, then that truck's gonna be out for a while. And um, but it's there and I'm, I'm gonna build that into the budget to know kind of which way we want to go. At least have, you know, it's one contingency plan. That way we're, we're in good shape and the other one probably looking at a purchase uh, in the future.
See if we can take a couple of questions. Yes, ma'am. Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Nancy Fisk, six oh three South Hart Avenue here in Avon Park.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, one thing I haven't heard any mention of recycling. And I think that Americans are very wasteful to begin with. It really concerns me that there's so much cardboard and newspaper and plastic in our trash bins. But my real question is, we do have a recycling area in Avon Park that is open certain hours and I take things over there. I've been told however, that all those things go to the landfill. And I'd like to know if that's true, because why are we bothering to recycle if it, if it's just being taken?
You're talking about the, the county, the big county bins that you're putting it into?
The ones here in Avon Park, which are over behind Ace Hardware there on that street. I can't remember what the street is, but they're fenced in. And so there are only certain hours where folks can drop off things. What happens to that?
Jason, do you happen to know for a fact?
Told by the person that works out there, yes, they do, they do recycle it. They, they do do that. And it, it's pretty clean. I, I go there as well. It's a couple of blocks from my house by Glenwood, uh, water plant. So they do, they do recycle. I mean, they, they do.
So I do know that the county's recycling company is at the county landfill. And that might be what you're talking about. So their, their facility is there.
So if we take things to, for newspaper and we sort the things like it's supposed to be, sometimes the person who's working there is very conscientious and they come and observe. I've seen people take things out of their car in a plastic bag and throw it into the wrong place. And the person in their vehicle does nothing about it. So I've been told that if it's contaminated, it just gets dumped in the, in the garbage.
That's probably true if it's contaminated, but the, I mean, the, the fact of the matter is it's a county program. It's not a city program. So we don't really have any oversight into it.
All right. Well, that makes me feel a little bit better about making that true on that trip several times a week.
Look for the county emblem versus the city emblem.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Jason.
Yes.
These front loaders, front loaders and rear loaders that's in the yellow, they're being assigned for auction. When did they, when were they assigned to go to auction?
One of the things that I, I, I had my, I had staff go out, the supervisors for each section. So I have the same thing that you have here. I have it for water, wastewater, um, in the public works department as well as our, our fleet, our, the mechanics. So we looked at all that, um, and they told me that, cause there's trucks that are, you know, some of the trucks, they've already been parted out. So I mean, I, I like to send things to auction when they still run. You can get, you can get something for them, but we have trucks that have just been sitting there and I don't, I don't know, you know, how I'm gonna get it there.
Jason, who authorized them to be parted out?
I don't know, Councilwoman. I didn't, it wasn't under, it wasn't under me. It was prior to me getting here.
I, I guess the question that, that I'm asking, I remember last year when we went through budgeting. We, we ordered a lot of vehicles. I, I personally think we ordered more than we should have. So to know that trucks are being parted out without coming to the council to, to even get our authorization, but yet still we spending all this money on vehicles. And I'm looking at the third one that's on in yellow, two thousand and sixteen. That's only eight years. That truck is eight years. It seems to me somebody is doing poor PMCS.
So in, in, in your, to address your, your question, there is, we do have a pretty good looking fleet, but the, the funds, being that the funds are different, this is the sanitation fund. I do have, you know, something else. We, we look at the budget. There are other, our water and sewer fund is, is a healthy fund and some of our other funds are good. And they have the money to purchase vehicles. Solid waste doesn't. The last vehicle that was purchased for solid waste was, we, we purchased one in twenty twenty-two and one in twenty twenty-one. That's, it's eighteen, nineteen, twenty-two. You know, you can look in the orange, it's kind of where you can, where you can see there, but um, there hasn't been one purchased in the last two years.
We need to try to get to the question in the back there as well. Name and organization for the record.
Zach Far, uh, six nine zero, South Wiggins Road, Avon Park, Florida. Um, Jason, appreciate the presentation you've put together so far. I just wanted to say that, um, our community-based nonprofit organization, Biotech Applied Research. We, speaking on biochar and a lot of this waste, we're pursuing an EPA community change grant to incorporate some pyrolysis technology into this community um, over the next six months. So you know, we would, the, the biotech applied research, we have a space at the Florida Airport Management. And we'd like to extend our services and offer a, a place to put some of that wood waste, yard waste. Um, we have an ongoing partnership with the University of Tennessee. Where they will take any of our wood, they'll test it for biochar properties and then see what it's best used for. It's a $500 million current American market for biochar, which basically is just um, wood being burned in the absence of oxygen. And then you just have a really fine ninety, hundred percent activated carbon. So it's good for water filtration, soil amendments, plastics. So we could certainly use any of that wood and would not charge the city a tipping fee for that service. So I just wanted to.
How many truckloads do you need, brother?
There would, there's not enough wood in this county to facilitate enough to turn this, this carbon into uh, bio concrete, for example, Yana. So we're working with Yana on this new work. So any and all wood waste, like we'd love to test it first, but yeah, we could turn it into a, a, a revenue generating opportunity for the community rather than a, just a wasteful, expensive, sure.
Now is this something, you can use like sap woods or is it something you have to use like the heart of trees?
Sapwood, hardwood, uh, softwood. So uh, the citrus trees are actually perfect. So that's what we're pursuing with the EPA, but they actually like their application so much, they want us to apply again. So we could potentially circle that. But any wood was great. Just uh, I'll talk to Jason and, and, and send some to University of Tennessee and see what we can, can do. But I'm, I'm almost, I'm pretty confident that we can use it for, water filtration is probably the best for this.
Okay. Well, yeah, I appreciate you bringing it up. Certainly sounds interesting. Thanks again. Any other questions before we get back into it? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So I mean, I, I'm putting it together. Does, what do you, what do you all think about, uh, you know, like I was talking about the zones and that you looked at there. We currently, if you look at our zone map, we do have, there's four different colors that's on the zone. You don't probably have it in front of you, but it's on the website. It was, I think the yellow, green, blue and orange were the colors. We can maybe do something along those lines, have um, we, we pick up once, you know, once every, uh, you know, once a month, we'd do something like that. Maybe then we create something, look into possibly doing a, a drop off for people who need it a little bit more urgently. We can do that. I, it's, I throw out some ideas. I, I, I do realize that it's much easier for, for people to just go take it across the street to the empty lot and dump it off there. But hopefully we can encourage people if they do have the opportunity to go take it to a place where they can go dump it if need be, instead of doing that to make the place look better.
I mean, I think the best thing for the council uh, would be kind of a multiple choice. So you know, if you're interested in going to a once a month or a different plan, or, or maybe a different uh, yard, um, amount of yards or anything like that. Kind of put it together and say, if we go with this route, it'll save, you know, this much money. And if you have two or three or four of those ideas, bring them to us with a dollar figure and that way we can actually seriously discuss it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, the money, I don't think it's gonna be that big a difference on the money, be a little bit. But it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be your appearance that people buy into it. I think that's the, that's the, the benefit there. But if I, you know, if I suggest it, it's based off of you telling, it's kind of give it to me and then I gotta, I gotta work up a budget where we have a meeting and I gotta put things together on what you're telling me you want.
It is somewhat shocking uh, to hear how little people take an interest in their garbage collection and how much it affects their lives. So any way that we can get people to be more aware and take more ownership of, of what they're actually generating and, and when it gets picked up and everything, I think it's a good thing. If people don't like it, we're certainly gonna hear about it. So I don't think there's any shortage of that. But unless something is a negative, we, we typically don't hear about it and it's hard to get people to take an interest in it. So any ideas you have of getting people more involved, I think would be good.
Sure.
I think on that part, the communication is key on that. Cause a lot of people, they may call the utilities department and they may get one answer from the utilities department. They may get tossed over to Karen is her name, I think. She may not be there. The phones may go unanswered. Messages may go unanswered. People get discouraged. Well, the utility department told me it was gonna be picked up here, but it didn't get picked up here. So I think that we need to really concentrate on the communication also.
And, and in our code, so everyone's aware, it's something that kind of goes back and forth. In our code, it states that we can just pick it up and charge you. Like again, we can pick it up and we'll, we'll determine the amount we charge you. Problem is, is that when residents get the bill for, you know, eighty bucks, sixty dollars, or if there's a, an honest mistake because it was turned to a recurring charge for whatever reason. And then they just keep getting it. Um, you know, we don't necessarily need to get their authorization if it's in front of their house, because we're just, we're picking up, but it's a good thing to do, right? So everyone wants to know what's going on, but that, that lag of having to get authorization, some things sit. And when they sit, it looks bad. And, and as it sits, it's, it prolongs. I personally feel that you know, we, we document and maybe not for the, the empty lots and see how it goes, but you, you get caught with the empty lot, you know, there's, there's criminal, that's a criminal as well as a fine. But um, you know, where we have, I think we can, if just by following code, if we can just assign the charge, if it's in front of someone's house and you didn't know, and we're doing everything we can to let you know that you're gonna have to pay, you're gonna have to pay the cost. Uh, or else you just charge everyone else a greater fee. And we pick it up, no problem. We just pick it up. We just go around, pick stuff up because, you know, we're charging everyone else. Maybe the person that doesn't, you know, an extra two, three dollars a month, we just pick everything up, you know, for, for that specific thing. So it's like what, what you want to do, it's up to you. It's like you wanna, you wanna go to a, you know, go to a buffet and you pay a little bit more, right? And you just kind of get what you want and then we can just go through and it's less of our team having to try to figure it out. Who's this, who's tag? How many times is that? Cause that's, that's, it requires manpower and putting together that we, we have about two hundred second and third warnings and we have about seven hundred first warnings that we've, that we've issued so far with these tags. And just entering them in is, is, is a process. Then you have to update it. It's, it's not easy by any means. Sometimes it's a lot easier just to pick it up and just charge for it. But I, I wanted at least to, to hear back from you all, what you thought how you want it. Is that something that you, you would entertain? Or would you like us just to see, hey, it's that much? We just, we bill as is to the utility bill per code? We do it like that?
Yeah, I mean, for me personally, if you told me that for three dollars a month, I could not ever worry about it, I would certainly take that option. So.
Well, I speak, I think I speak for the community. Well, I speak, I think I speak for the community. I mean, we we done raised enough, my God. I know we gotta do it. We running a business here. I'll never forget that, okay? But. I'm not no talking about, see, to mayor, two or three dollars may mean nothing to him.
I would say about ninety-five percent.
But. A lot of them, it may need, it may mean something to them. I I never forget that uh a big majority of our community is on social security alone. See, mayor probably wouldn't know nothing about that.
Um, may I interject?
Appreciate you spitting words in my mouth.
So before this de-escalates.
Sure.
We have a lot to accomplish tonight. I think that Jason has given us excellent food for thought. That we could come back and discuss this at a later meeting. We have an executive session that still needs to take place and we still need to deal with the interim city manager position.
Sounds good. All right, anything, any last words on the?
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Great job.
All right.
Wait, before we get to this next thing, I wanted to just say something. Um, last week, the meeting was real kind of crazy, not the workshop, the meeting. Um, there are some things that were said.
Um, actually, before we talk about that, I'd like to request that we do the executive summary or excuse me, session first. So that we can get Mr. Christie out of here and then we can take on that other business. Okay, I just thought I'd mention that.
Um, um, if any, la- last week, we had, I had a resident come up to me and was really irate, really mad, really upset. She attacked all three of the council members that voted um yes to terminate Mark Schrader. Um, I would encourage anyone in the audience that if you have any kind of opinion on how the vote went. To please participate in the public participation section and do not approach a council member aggressively after a meeting. That was very uncalled for and I was really actually surprised. That's all.
I think we're elected to uh be go-betweens between the city government and the the people that live here. So if they wanna approach councilperson, certainly they can do so.
Not aggressive.
However they wish, in the confines of the law. All right, moving on, executive session. This is item number fourteen.
This is a closed session from the public, so we would have to recess.
Yep.
And start that session and then.
Are are you going to have that session here or you've had it before in the code enforcement in here? Okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll now uh. Postpone our regular meeting or just, excuse me, pause our regular meeting for the executive session. We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll begin our executive session. All the public will have to vacate the room so we can have that meeting. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Well, I've been back.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
All right, city council meeting is back in session. Looks like we are on the job description.
Yes, sir.
Take it away.
So what you have before you is a um final draft of everything that we discussed at the special workshop. Um, implementing all the the questions and um answers that you guys had. What we need from you guys tonight is to go ahead and approve the job description as well as the salary. You're also going to need to appoint the me formally as interim city manager. And you're also going to have to agree on the salary for me in this interim period.
Okay. All right, so the last meeting we had discussed um the salary was uh, talked about, what was it? They're a department pay?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. All right, is everything good with that? Okay, do we have a motion to that effect? This would be a motion to appoint Chrissy as the interim city manager at that pay scale.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing them, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember McCure.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor, Deputy Mayor Benhart.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, job description questions. What do we got? Anything?
From us? Oh, um, my only thing is under qualifications. I just wanted to make sure we specify. It says um the five years municipal management of a minimum twenty-five million overall budget or twelve mil- million general fund. With fifty or or employees and then it has or corporate management with fifty or more employees. I just wanna put that five-year minimum in there as well.
Anyone opposed to that? Okay.
No.
We'll make that note. Staff have that note?
Yes.
All right. Anything else?
There's only one comment I'd like to make is that uh I understand all these uh. Uh resumes are gonna go to our HR person who's gonna do the uh uh go through um. The background checks and everything.
Um, yes, what what I would like to do uh with council approval is because we could get twenty-five applicants or more. Um, and so I I provided council with an applicant tracking sheet that would be used when all applications come in. I would log them in that tracking sheet. Council would receive all applications.
Okay, that's that's what I was gonna ask.
They're they're gonna receive all of them. I'm not making any decisions on it.
Perfect.
I'm just putting checks in the boxes for you and then you have to look at that and maybe pick. My recommendation would be to pick the top five that that qualify. And then once you do that, then we put them through the background check process.
Okay.
And get interviews scheduled accordingly.
So are we seeing all the applications that come in or just the ones that are qualified?
All, all.
And 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 I like that idea because there's, you know, we, one, we don't wanna have a committee of one.
Right.
And two, we said, you know, we have, we fire, we hire, so I think we should look at all of them. Would that way we can compare whether somebody's got twenty years experience and only one year of college compared to somebody's graduated. And only been on a job two years. So I think we can, we can have it. Information we want down for requirements, but we also can use our own judgment uh on looking at everyone. And so there's a possibility that uh, you know, we can adjust as we go along, possibly.
So when will the references and stuff come into play though, as far as contacting?
That that's a good question. I gave a, did they get a copy of this? Okay, so I put together a steps in the selection process that kind of outlines all of those questions. So like the step one would be, we're defining the job description and the setting the salary range, right?
What was the total with all the ones that you looked like you handpicked after that? Was it somewhere around eighty-seven dollars? Didn't you have suggestions of how far reaching we would do the background checks?
Uh, yes, yeah, I want I wanna get to that too, cause I I spoke to Brian and uh in regards to that. Um, so so once you approve the job description, excuse me, and the salary range, which was recommended at the last meeting, a hundred to a hundred and thirty. Depending on experience. Um, once that that motion is set, then we can prepare the advertisement, which we could do tomorrow if it's agreed upon tonight. Get that out there. Um, we would advertise in uh the Florida League of Cities, ICMA, major regional newspapers. As well as our city website. Um, and council needs to to let me know, how long do you want to accept applications for? Um, be it four weeks or six weeks, and then we close the application process for you to review everything that's come in up until that point. Um, and we go through those steps. Um, and then as the applications come in, I'll log them into the tracking sheet for you. At that closing date is when I'll provide you with all of it. You'll get all the applications, you'll get the tracking sheet. Um, so you can start reviewing. Um, I'll send notices to the applicants to let them know that's the process that we're going through. And then uh you'll pick the five top candidates that you wanna interview.
I actually, I actually would prefer to get them like every two weeks. Because that would give us more time to look at, look at, instead of them, say we got twenty. Then, you know, it'd take two weeks to look, whatever. I'd rather look as you get it. Five or ten at a time and that gives us more time to study in between because we're also gonna be meeting on a regular basis now that we're doing budget.
Sure.
So we're gonna have budget meetings almost every week. We're gonna have other meetings.
Well, I don't, then maybe should it be a week, like once a week, whatever's coming for the week?
On the Friday, whatever came in for the week, I could provide.
If we're gonna have the budget, then if we get five or ten, we're gonna have to go those.
Having a meeting, then you could actually bring them to the one of those other meetings, whether it's a budget or city council, give us what you got. And then, then then at the end, I think it'll be a lot quicker for us to figure out.
Once a week, sounds great.
Okay.
All right, how long do we wanna advertise it? Four or six weeks?
I'm up, I'm up for four.
Four weeks and that, but prob- providing weekly, I'm sorry.
Yeah, provide them weekly.
Okay.
So we got suggestion of advertise every four weeks. Anybody opposed to that?
Uh, yeah, I kinda was pushing for six too.
Push it for six too.
Sounds like six it is.
Okay.
I I have just a couple of um suggestions for the. Okay. Um, so the salary hundred thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand DOE, I think you mean DOQ, right?
Experience or qualifications, yeah.
Well, generally qualifications covers everything, the experience and education and all that. So I just, that's.
Yeah, DOQ, we can change that.
And in the uh second paragraph, it says um. Um, uh, let's see, say, say council mayor, uh manager for form of government or council includes the mayor. Uh, deputy mayor and three council members. I think that's probably okay, nevermind.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
And so with that being said, are you gonna score them when you sit here?
No, the um this, we're not to the scoring part yet. This, after the interviews, um, once, once you select your top five, then we schedule the interview day. Um, that'll have to probably be a separate special meeting, whatever, however you define that. Um, where where you would actually conduct the interviews and you'll get a score sheet. Um, city manager has recommended and I think is a great idea. Um, we're polling uh department heads to provide ten questions each operationally. Um, like uh Melody would come up with ten budget questions, unique to budget. Uh, Jason, Public Works to present you with um that can be asked during the interview process in addition to whatever else. You feel you need to ask.
So are there any preliminary questions or can we require like a narrative or something to be included with their application? Rather than just having, you know, where they went to college and where they've worked?
Sure, sure. We could ask that as part of the uh application process. Okay. Yes.
Is that microphone on? Is is your microphone on?
Y'all can hear me now? They would get a certain amount of scores on what we're looking for. You 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 biding it up in different category, right? So you telling me after they do the interview, that's when we would score them? Now, okay, we would score them after the interview. Other words, we won't have a preconceived of anything until after the interview.
Correct, yeah, because the the preliminary is just the applicant tracking. Do they meet the qualifications, surface level qualifications, right? All the checks in the boxes, they meet the educational requirement, they meet the experience requirement, they met the threshold of. Working for a municipality and fifty-plus employees, all those checks in the boxes. The the scoring during the interview process is knowledge-based. You're asking budget questions. Do they understand budget? And you're scoring them based on that, on a scoring matrix. That's where that scoring comes in. And then afterwards, we'll put all of that in a tabulation using each score that that is provided by council. And then you can look at each other's, look at it as a whole and decide if if one of those five is is worth going through the process. Um, you can always call them back in for a second interview if you narrow it down to the top two. And and they're really close. You can bring them back in for a second interview. Uh, that's that's purely up to council and how they wanna handle that.
So we're not bound to choose the one with the highest score. That's just information gathering for us.
informational, just to help, help you in the process.
Well, why are we doing the score then if we're not gonna, if we don't, if we're not bound to do it, why are we scoring them?
Well.
I'm I'm asking, I'm just asking.
It it again, it's up to council. Council brought up the possibility of scoring last time. Um, so that's why I was going the direction of putting the tabulation together where you actually score each question.
Okay, so I'm asking a question to council. Why are we scoring if we're not gonna go with the highest score? I I just need to know that.
If I could just add to it, I think that it's important because it helps keep everybody focused and it gives you a a method of measurement. For individuals, so you're not just going with the first initial, you're actually taking time to look at these scores and say, okay, this is where this guy is at or this girl is at. Um, I I think it's just helpful to focus. This is gonna be a difficult process. So the more tools we can give you guys to help streamline that process, scoring represents one of those tools.
Basically giving us a rubric so we judge each person the same, by the same standards.
I'm sorry. I I have looked at other cities and how they've done this and they have used scoring rubrics for that. It's pretty common.
Okay.
Have you all considered um, it says a qualification does it has to be a public or business administration or closely related field? I mean, I, I think engineers would, you know, be good managers of city. I think you might wanna mention that as a possibility.
Engineer or even public works?
Well, it's, I mean, I think if it's public works, it should be more like an engineer, even the, you know, um.
Yeah, yeah, cause we don't actually don't have a city engineer, public work engineer, right?
We have an engineer that's in, that runs public works, but.
He's not an engineer.
No.
Oh, public administrator.
But but he he's a, or he's, he's one of those equivalent guys.
But I mean, I, I just, I just thought that was a possibility.
No, I.
One, one other thing too that we need to clarify for the job description, um, this kind of brings us to our next point. Um, in regards to the background check, I know that uh in the last meeting, there was conversation about, you know, do we. Do we do a twenty-year background check as opposed to currently we do seven-year? Um, the the concept of a ten-year or a twenty-year came up. I did some research on that. I also ran it through uh Brian. Um, and there are limitations. The longer you go back.
Yep.
Certainly, we could do employment twenty years and, you know, professional personal references that far back. But with the criminal checks, um, pretty much the convictions are seven years where they have, you know, a lot of bearing. Um, beyond that misdemeanors, you don't do much with. Or if there is a conviction beyond that, it has to directly affect what that person's gonna be responsible for.
You say you you spoke with who?
Uh, Brian Koji, our our labor attorney. And Jerry, Jerry was on the phone with that one too, so he.
Yeah, I definitely didn't wanna go twenty.
Yeah.
I think professionally twenty years is fine, I mean.
Okay, and uh ten-year, uh we could do a ten-year background uh criminal check. Uh, which would increase our costs. It's only like ten dollars more. Um, to add those extra three years for the criminal piece, if you're okay with that.
Sounds good to me. Anybody opposed to that?
No.
Next.
One last thing here, cause there were some questions on this. Um, the other question in regards to the background check was can the background check information be shared with council members? And the answer is yes, um, on a, on a sidebar to to provide that information to council only. Um, also with Chrissy looking at it and redacting any like socials and things like that. Um, so that we can do, so you can look at all the entire package for that. Um, uh, it was mentioned that the charter says that the city manager can live anywhere. Uh, we researched the charter. Uh, I checked with Jerry, Brian as well. Um, our charter does not say that the city manager can live anywhere and we can specify um the desire radius. Um, so is everybody still good with Highlands County and within twenty-five miles of Avon Park? Within ninety days that they reside here?
Yeah, that's fine with me. I I would consider giving it a little bit longer.
Yeah.
Right.
Like a hundred and eighty days or something.
Hundred and eighty days?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we also, I remember me and Brittany saying something about city limits.
Yeah, I I think.
Somebody's. No, I don't, I don't think there's anybody that.
Yeah.
Never mind. I, I think we need to um.
You need to, you think we need to what?
Li- let them live in the city, in, but not in the city limits.
In the city.
In, meaning in Avon. Meaning they have to live in Avon Park, yes. But that's, you know, that's my.
I I I, um, me too. And 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 don't get me.
Yeah. Substantially.
But we giving them an opportunity to move what the mayor said.
Let's call it to a vote. So I I propose that we stick with the original of twenty-five miles inside Highlands County. Give them a hundred and eighty days to move into that circle. Does anyone care to second it?
I second, I agree.
We have a motion and a second. Any last questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, what's next thing?
Right. So the other, the other item is just a clarifying item cuz this also came up um in regards to uh the city clerk as interim city manager. Uh it was mentioned that the interim role had a limit on how long they can be in that role. Uh the charter does not specify a limit uh for that. Uh sometimes uh from what Jerry was sharing with me, you, you will see a hundred and eighty days, but ours, ours doesn't specify that. And the important thing is that city and council are showing due diligence and attempting to fill the position.
Perfect.
It's just trying, those types of limitations just, just to try to keep you from having, avoiding having to pay the big salary to a city manager and, and um that's what is contrary to the charter, but we don't have it in ours, I know. And, and abuse the, the interim as much as you can.
Anything else?
I think that's everything.
Okay, we agree uh, agreed on salary, right?
Yep.
Okay. Anyone care to change that?
No.
We're good there.
My other question on the, on the background check on that, we had all those star things, were those things you wanted to add or just suggestions?
Yes, uh that's a good question. I'll, I'll explain that real quick. I know it's late.
Okay.
Um so our normal package on the, on the background check pricing that we provided here, um the essential package is the forty-two dollars and it covers what's in that uh section there. Um but it only covers like if the person lives in three counties. So if they go over those counties, then it starts getting, you get charged per county that you're researching. Um the civil search would be an add-on because we want to look for lawsuits. That came up. We want to make sure we do that. Um as well as a federal criminal, um that would be an add-on. So uh overall pricing could be roughly hundred and twenty to hundred and fifty, depending on where all the person lived for that. Um the drug testing would be seventy-nine dollars to do the pre-employment drug test uh for that. The only thing I wasn't able to get a price on yet is the uh credit check. That would be a separate uh company that I have to find. This company does not do those.
Wouldn't we only want to drug test the person that we choose?
I would think so.
Yeah, yes.
Absolutely.
But you're only doing that, one of those.
Yeah.
Um. Correct, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, actually, you could just, we could pick out our top, top five or top whatever and do the extensive search on those, right? We're not planning on doing.
Only talking about drugs.
Only on the top. Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, anything else?
I just need a, a clarification. Would the interim's salary be retro or is it from tonight on?
Retro.
Thank you.
That was the intent of my motion. All right.
So what about the other four little add-ons that she put on there?
Should we discuss those?
Yeah, she, she listed all of them.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
That all together like one twenty-nine or something?
Seventy-nine is only whatever.
All right.
I do have, I'm sorry, mayor, I do have one other question that I just thought of. Um because we're, we're casting the net, I mean, we're, we're gonna limit the person to living here within a hundred and eighty days, but how does council want to handle an out-of-state applicant? Are we gonna offer Zoom interview? If they want to move here, that's something that needs to be.
No, I mean, if you're talking about someone actually having to live here and work here every day, they gotta get on a plane and come on down here otherwise.
Okay, in person. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, so you just need a motion to approve the job description as presented with noted changes. All right, anyone care to make that motion?
To move.
We have a motion. Anyone care to second? We have a second. Let's call for questions. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item fifteen, budget calendar.
So you have in front of you your budget calendar for our meetings. The only meetings that cannot change are the tentative budget and the final budget. So this is just for your information.
Okay, so the two in red.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Can you pass a copy at for next meeting?
Yes, I can.
Please.
And so um as I do every year, and I ask, you know, as you not wanting me to, to attend your budget meetings um.
I don't think it's necessary.
No, bless you.
All right, on that note, item number sixteen, city attorney update, subordination of city utility interest for right away.
And so we got this um subordination of city utility interests from um the county on behalf of uh FDOT. What they're asking is basically, we have a, a, a private easement on Sun Pier Road, the, I believe contains uh water and sewer mains and also a lift station. Is that right? Uh it's a very substantial lift station as well. Um so the um the document that they provide is, is a standard document. And um I, I, I just don't like, it's not good, okay? Uh if they, I mean, hopefully they meant to be clear, but they weren't clear. So as, as to the difference between utility and city, don't really care about that. But if you look at some of the, the, the um statements in there, um it doesn't make it absolutely clear that if there, they um, they widen the road or they make any changes, repave the road or anything like that, that um we won't be required to move our, our uh, our facilities ourselves. They'll remove them. Not only will they move them, but they'll have to move them into an easement, a new easement. So that we don't, the next time they do that, another fifty years or whatever, you still won't have to do it. They'll have to do the same thing at that point, but it's just not clear. Um uh the other thing is, I, I mean, first of all, they're, they're asking you, give up your private easement in favor of being regulated by DOT. I, that kind of sticks in my craw a little bit, but I can understand why they do it. Um and um, yeah. I suppose that that's up to you, but I, I think it's probably okay. Cuz what they're trying to say is, you know, well, if we do any work out there, it's gotta meet their requirements for their utility manual. You have to put the chevrons in the right direction and all that state MOT has got to be right and all that stuff. And I understand why they do that. Um but with regard to the rest of it, it's gotta be absolutely clear that we're never gonna have to pay to move our lines. And it's just not, and that's the agreement they proposed. But I don't know, DOT is gonna approve this or not? Probably not, but um you don't have to approve the easement. So what's gonna happen? They'll probably say, well, we just won't take that um Sun Pure Road and make it into a state road of any type and so on. And that's their decision to make. It's up to you. They may have a presentation they'll want to make to you about it and so on. But I'll just simply say that, you know, that this is really, if the intent was that absolutely without a doubt, they're gonna move our lines and, and into a new easement, it's not clear in this agreement.
Yeah, so I think the, the goal is they're trying to accomplish is to put in a red light there.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, or new core.
Yeah, but so. In which case, why do they need to have our full easement?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm asking is, is it possible to have a phone conversation with them so that you can maybe sort some of that stuff out?
Yeah.
Quickly rather than waiting a month back and forth, back and forth.
Yeah, I don't even know um who I talked to over there, but I, I guess um you had some contact or something?
Yes, I've been speaking with Melissa at the county. I could reach out to her. She was here earlier, but I told her, listen, probably best idea.
Yeah.
You just watch the video and then I'll get back to you. So I'll call her, see if I can arrange a meeting between.
Yeah, be happy. I mean, I'm happy to talk about it, what, what can be resolved, but um this is a DOT agreement. I doubt that she can authorize any changes anyway, but I think we need to talk about it.
Okay. Very good. All right.
Mayor, mayor, I'm sorry, can I, can I go back to Ms. Denise and ask her, what is the actual date that she's gonna advertise the position, you know?
Uh we're hoping tomorrow we'll start putting it out there.
And so it's going to be six weeks from that date?
Mm-hmm.
Is that counting weekends too?
Yeah, it'll be, yeah, every Friday over the next six, counting this week, we'll be providing you with the applications.
No, I was just trying to figure out if you're gonna advertise it tomorrow, it's gonna be six weeks from now that it's gonna have a closing date.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
And that's including weekends too?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Regular updates.
Yes, sir. So the FAA has informed Lowell Cleary that the AIPP lease is with their legal review team and will render their record of decision in a matter of weeks. That information was as good as of last week. So I will continue to follow up with them on that. Um I provided you in the uh documentation, a copy of the warranty information from Michael Pollitt for the uh air conditioning units at the Boys and Girls Club. Uh if you could please just have a look at it, tell me what you think. Maybe we could discuss it the next city council meeting.
Okay.
I provided you um information about how to subscribe to bids. I know a couple of council members have reached that out, so um we have a step-by-step instructions that was included with your documentation. Of course, if you have any questions, please feel free to let me know. Um Jason is interested in hosting a workshops on utilities similar to what he discussed today where he presented on the sanitation. He'd like to do the same for utilities. I wanted to get your feedback on it. Is that something that you're interested in and would like to have a workshop on? Or would you prefer it be something with a regular city council meeting?
I think.
Definitely want the information.
Yeah, man, I think a regular meeting.
Okay.
Oh, you said regular meeting?
Whole workshop disorder.
Huh? I said workshop.
Do you anticipate it being longer than what you did tonight?
It's gotta be intensive, probably three times as long.
Three times as long, okay. Well, you get your very own meeting.
I'll get with council members to find out a good date.
Okay.
Um just a heads up on some local happenings on the Fourth of July. Local uh, a conglomerate of local businesses have gotten together to agree to do pop-up markets inside businesses on Main Street. So it's gonna be during the Fourth of July fireworks, but there will be these little pop-up markets inside the businesses. There will be some decorations, but it doesn't violate any kind of code issues, land development codes. So we went ahead, met with them and gave them the go-ahead to do that. So just want to let you know that's gonna be taking place. Um also, I provided you guys maps. Um these maps are for the Orange Blossom Gravel Special Event. This isn't until January of twenty twenty-five, but I wanted to get you looking at it because they are interested in submitting a special event request and there's some implications because it's, it's all over Avon Park. So I want you to take a look at that um and get with me, just to kind of give me your feedback on that. Um I have.
Sorry, can you, what is, what is that?
It's a cycling event.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, it's a cycling event. So everyone, they'll be riding bicycles throughout uh several areas of the city. Um some of them are pretty widespread, so it's just something to, to keep in mind. I didn't want to throw that in your face and say, hey, make a decision. So if you could take some time to look at it, I appreciate it. Um we received a wonderful message from Ms. Shirley Johnson. She was giving the team kudos. In her word, she says, I believe every supervisor or deck director came out and lent a helping hand. This is in regard to the Memorial Day event. Those under their supervision work diligently and I truly appreciate each one of them. I always purchase the brand flags and put them up from two thousand eight. I never asked the city to purchase flags, but I know you guys would. Thanks for caring. So thank you, Ms. Shirley. Appreciate you reaching out. Um two more things and then I promise to let you guys go. So I am still undergoing my city clerk certification. The next conference is from June twenty-third to June twenty-sixth, which falls during a city council meeting. I met with Melody and she has agreed to help that night to facilitate the city council meeting. So with your blessing, I'd like to continue that. I am literally after this, one conference away from the certification.
Hey.
I don't have a problem with it.
So, so that's local or out of town?
That's out of town. I'll be in Kissimmee.
So who would be in charge when you out of town?
Melody.
Okay.
And I wanted to make sure that was okay with the council before.
Right. Sounds good to me.
And then lastly, uh June tenth would be the next regular scheduled city council meeting. But as I had alluded to earlier, it's kind of difficult with the back-to-back meetings and all that we have to accomplish. So I wanted to get your temperature to see if you wanted to continue with that meeting or wait until the June twenty-fourth meeting.
What was the one item that we were talking about earlier? I think you were talking about it. You said, don't we have a meeting next week?
That was regarding the ITV.
Regarding the ITV, oh, yeah, but that was already, okay. So there's nothing currently on the agenda?
Not, not yet.
Okay.
The only, the only thing I did have was um for the CRA board. And that was for um council member Taylor's request to have something on the agenda. So that, but that would fall under Sean.
Is that what we discussed today? Is that part of what we discussed today? So because Mr. Jerry has to write a letter, we probably need to postpone it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing we can do.
Yeah.
By June twenty-fourth, a letter should be written, wouldn't, right?
No, I was talking about the tenth meeting.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
All right, so.
So late.
All in favor of postponing our next meeting and was there gonna be a CRA meeting as well?
No, not on the time.
And you, and you have nothing major pertinent on the agenda for us?
Mm-mm.
All right.
Wow, you put enough on tonight.
I think I did.
So we'll, I'll make a motion to cancel the June tenth meeting.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions?
No questions.
Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Lord, yes.
Motion passes.
June twenty-nine.
Anything else? Really good in the city?
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
I, I really don't understand on this FAA things and AIPP, why do we still have Lowell Cleary involved with that? I mean, to me, I thought we kind of finished everything off. We're just waiting for the FAA. I think that between city manager, they can communicate with them. I think we've already spent all of our grant money to pay for the attorney, which maybe we should keep. But I don't think we have needed a consultant to talk back and forth about a couple items that uh that we can decide amongst ourselves. I, I just think it's a.
Well, right now we're at a holding pattern cuz we're waiting on that.
Well, that's fine. That's fine. So let's hold out, but I, I personally think we can do without Mr. Cleary. I don't think we need his services anymore. I'll be happy with just having the, the city, the attorney, Bernard was his name. Uh I, I think we're just uh delaying our stealths here. We're just that, somebody, it seems like everybody's, no, I'm gonna say, re-say this. It just seems like things are being slow-walked and also being spent excessively. I think we've already spent all our grant money already. So I, I just don't see why we need somebody else in between there to make comments or opinions when I think we have a, a great staff, a great interim city manager, and we have five great people up here. I think we can make these decisions if they're willing to talk with her. Uh I think we can just do, do without him because I, I just think we've, I've had enough of him. I think he's, I think he did a great job, but I think it's time to let him go.
So at this point in time, we're just waiting on the approval or approval with changes or disapproval from FAA, right?
Correct. So if they're. Airport manage, management is gonna be coming before you guys with certain changes to their agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Um but I'm holding to wait for that AIPP before I move on anything, just because I think that's the safest bet, but that's.
Realistically, Mr. Cleary is not gonna be doing anything until we get that.
Right.
That answer, right?
Is that the FAA from now on will just contact.
Yeah, the, the only problem is, is that if they come back and say, we'll approve it, but we want you to change X, Y, Z.
And there's still some clo, closing items that need to be dealt with by him.
Isn't that what we have the attorney for?
Well, I think we should at least uh discuss with Mr. Bernard was whether he, he agrees that we, that we can do without. Lowell.
I would just make this request, given the circumstances that the administration is currently under with all these things going on. Let me get the AIPP first before we make any changes, just so I can see what happens and where to go from there. I promise to present everything to city council and let you know what's going on. But I'm, I'm cautious to make a lot of changes all at once, considering the in temporary.
Have an attorney to talk to. That, that's really all we're really have to concerned about is any legal language.
Yeah, but.
You got some.
Mr. Charlie Brown?
Name Brown, Charlie Brown, six nine zero South Riggins Road. Thank y'all for letting me speak tonight. Yes, sir. Uh we, we, we came tonight because we did want to uh discuss uh some of the happenings with the AIPP and, and that process. Essentially, long story short, because I know we've been here for quite some time, we have twenty-three and a half million in projects that if we don't begin those projects by January, uh by December thirty-first, we're, we're definitely gonna lose them. De, de, definitely gonna lose our. De- de- definitely going to lose our, uh, legislative money that we got from the state legislature. So what we did want to propose is that we, you know, s- since we're waiting on the decision from, from the FAA on the A I P P, if we could move forward with the financial aspects so that we can been, begin these projects. Because like, say, for example, uh, Zach came up and discussed the EPA grant. If we don't get the turning lanes built at the airport and get started on those before December thirty-first, we're going to lose that money and also lose that grant because we won't be able to build the facility that we need out there. So I, I definitely don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I think based off of our performance, based off of, you know, the relationship that we have with all, with, with all each other. I mean, from working with the city staff and everything, I, I, I've, I, I believe that we could move forward without the exemptions because that is all that the FAA will be making a decision on, so those three exemptions. But as far as the sponsorship and, 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 I mean, as far as running the airport and, and, uh, subjugating the leases and the fuel, we can move forward with that, the city can make that decision. And then that'll empower us to be able to go to our financiers and begin these projects. Because part of the issue is, we've been waiting for this two-week decision for about nine, ten months. And so i- it's, and, and we're getting ready to come on another legislative session where we're going to go and ask the state legislature for more money and they've awarded to us two years in a row and we've started none of those projects. So it's, it's, it's getting to a, a, we, we got to really, we got to make a decision for ourselves instead of maybe waiting on the government and I, and I know that, you know, taking that leap sometimes is, you know, especially when you think it's right around the corner, but we've been waiting on this right around the corner for quite some time and, and we really need to get these projects underway.
Well, we, we approved FAM to manage the airport, correct?
Yes.
So.
Uh, we, I think we have eighteen years left on that.
I suggest we let them manage the airport and do what they need to do.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody's not in favor of getting the project started. Obviously, the, the big question is, do we have the ability to do so? So you mentioned the, uh, the road project and you need turning lanes and all that.
Yes.
Is that something that we can do without that approval?
Yes, it's something that we can do without their approval and I guess there's, there's many different ways that we can go about doing it. Um, with our, with the previous administration that was running, it was always, we were not going to discuss this until the A I P P is done completely. Uh, we won't even discuss the turning lanes, the fencing project that we went out and lobbied for. You know, the, the parallel tax way, the new hangars. These are all things that are, that are on the line that we kind of push the previous city manager, hey, you need to, we, we need to at least begin this project, we need to do the design on this. And also, since we lobbied to get those projects, we should be able to self-perform that work.
Now, are they awarded to FAM or are they awarded to the city?
They'll be awarded to the city and so then we would, we would do, we would complete the work and then we would invoice the city for that grant. So I mean, that, that's a way that we can move forward, uh, but, uh, and as, speaking of policy, J T will be able to speak, you know, more in depth than myself. But, uh, yes, that, that is something that we, we definitely can do, whether it be an amendment to our current management agreement or approving the A I P P without those exemptions.
Mm-hmm.
So that we can begin the projects.
Jerry, anything?
Yeah, no, I, I wouldn't want to finalize the A I P P until we deal with the issue of, of, um, fact that you're not going to get grants right now from the federal government at all.
It's, it's not the federal government, it was, uh, D O T of state for, for the local, uh, uh, for the D O T, not FAA, we're, we're still fully funded by that.
D O T, which is maybe more of the grants and then, but, but nevertheless, they, you know, we need to deal with that, that issue. Um, and I know we haven't come to an agreement on that yet, but that needs to be, that, that needs to be built in because if we can't get the legislation changed, we're going to, we're going to end up with, uh, really, um, an anchor around your neck with regard to not being able to get grants.
So, so I'm glad you brought that up. So over two years ago, I recommended that we run a bill called the Be Ready Act, the Building Rule Economies Through Aviation Development and Infrastructure Act. It wasn't until the last sixty days that Lowell Clary notified us that the F dot did not want to participate in any grant monies if the A I P P went through, but not if the city is still currently the sponsor. So we have waited two years to run that legislative bill and we are very prepared to run it this year for sure because chapter three thirty-four that governor, governs G A airports has been out of date since we started this process and we have identified that, we have tried to correct that problem. And even to Charlie's point on the money, yes, if we don't start that turning lane projects or this year appropriation by December thirty-first, they will take that money back. Currently, we could still facilitate that project and just like your public works or any of your other staff who still have to bring the I T Bs in front of you, the R F Ps in front of you, prior to the, a sponsorship agreement, if and when the FAA approves that. What we're simply asking for is the same thing that we asked for from day one, which is a forty-nine-year public-private partnership. So we still work, we're still an extension of staff for y'all. And when the FAA does issue those exemptions, which are three, one of which relieves the city of liability for all the grants that have been out there during the last eighteen years. Two, for the city to allow money from the airport to your general revenue, because prior to that, that is revenue diversion. Or three, for us to be able to make a profit. We're saying that we are fine waiting on those three exemptions, but we still do not want to see all of our work go to vain. Or whether that's airport infrastructure or whether that's what Zach talked about earlier today. And so.
Can I interject for a moment?
Yes, please.
Excellent points, by the way, I know that we've talked about this and you know that I voiced my support to you guys. This is an agenda item, it's, I told you that too, that it's got to go before city council.
Right.
It is. Pretty late and I really want the council to be able to have full attention, to pay attention to this stuff, it's important. So can we put this on the next agenda so that I can give you guys an opportunity to do like I had suggested, a proposal so that they can see this in black and white? Because right now, given that it's been a twelve-hour day for me, I'm already like zoning out on all the numbers, like what are these numbers about? So I'm just saying it might be better if we do this as a presentation so that they can fully absorb the information as well.
And I, I, I really feel like you need to have both your consultants at a meeting where they're going to discuss this because that's what we hired them for. You hired, I mean, be, be ridiculous at this point to say, okay, well, you know, we'll, we'll cut back on this. At this pivotal moment, we're asking for, they're asking for a lot, basically.
No, I, I think that the last update I got from the former city manager, there's, the city in the FAA was going to close this on June first. That is also two days ago. And so I get that y'all guys are not responsible for the FAA's decisions and so we understand that. But in the meantime, we are still being handcuffed to be able to be proactive and I thought we were going to be an agenda item today. So my apologies, that's why we hung out for this.
By the time, when we had already spoken, that agenda was already planned out. I planned, I planned this agenda out probably a good, well, as soon as I became the interim, I started planning this agenda out.
Well, and that's simply saying that, uh, Banner, uh, the attorney, has said, do not rock the boat with this type of stuff before the approval comes in. And so I, I think they need to have an opportunity to, to speak to this when, when you guys want to bring, bring it up at the, maybe the next meeting.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, Jerry, but the, the same agreement that we're talking about was voted on November thirtieth as well. And we're not asking for any changes except for the exemptions that is what the record of decision states for, so.
So my only question is, can we basically have the grants in our name and then just have them carry out the maintenance on it? Would that mess anything up?
They said that they, they would not issue the grants.
That's not correct. It's, it's just like Kimberly Horn would be right now, they're a general consultant to y'all, they execute many, many projects. It is no different than the way any other airport operates in the country currently, even as that forty-nine-year agreement or public-private partnership. So anytime there is a public dollar spent, I will be at this podium until the FAA says otherwise, I do not need to come to the podium anymore to request those services. So the, I'm not asking for a change in policy here, I'm not asking for a change in anything, not even asking for you to not approve what y'all already approved in November, which quite frankly, the FAA was upset or confused of why the city wants to move forward with something like this, but they're not willing to sign for it. And that was brought up even in the Atlanta trip that the Mark Schrader went to, David Banner, Lowell Clary of, we have never reviewed one of these before without the municipality or the authority signing on behalf of them today. And so that, I just don't want to see that we go out, we spend a lot of time, money and resources for our community that we have partnered here with for it all to go in vain because of, you know, once again, our date has been pushed back again, pushed back again and pushed back again. So I'm not saying it's anybody's fault here today, but the lease has been negotiated, it's been, it has been thoroughly and thoughtfully negotiated. It was even, the FAA general counsel even said it was the cleanest lease that she has ever been presented with why she, why she's been a general counsel of the FAA. That was quoted to us in Atlanta, it's been quoted here in these city council meetings before. And so to me, if all you do is remove the three exemptions and you move forward because that's all they're ruling on is the three exemptions, I don't see why I would rock the boat when this has been voted on and decided on or why we're going to upset anybody or why the FAA, why would they get confused when they are the regulatory agency that writes the circulars that actually presents all these policies to begin with? And so.
But what about D O T's grants?
So D O T's grants would still be fine as it is today until the A I P P is approved.
Again, I just think that doing this right now.
Okay.
I promise you it will be on an agenda, June twenty-fourth.
All right.
My strongest suggestions, you have Banner and, and, uh, Clary here for that. Discuss these items with them because they're the experts, I've only been peripherally involved in this thing because we have, we're paying a lot of money to those consultants.
Yeah.
Agreed. All right.
I don't agree, I think we should, uh, just sign it and let them do what they got to do if it's not going to mess with the A I P P at all.
That's, that's what we're wanting to make sure is that it's not going to, I mean, that's.
Nobody sitting here can make that decision. That's why we have.
Well, as long as we do it before December thirty-first, so they don't.
June twenty-fourth, you have my word, it will be on the agenda for you guys to discuss it, I promise.
I'll be done before September.
And make sure they bring their presentation too.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, anything else to go to the city?
Um, Mayor, I heard you mumble, there's no one here that can make that decision, explain it.
No one here has the qualifications to make that decision, that's why we hired consultants and outside attorneys who do have those qualifications to make that decision.
The decision on whether or not we're going to be penalized is what he's referring. Not make the decision on whether or not to sign it, but to, to know the law good enough to know if we're going to be penalized by D O T and not get any more.
To understand the ramifications of this decision.
So you want McClear here at the next meeting, so they can what?
Explain it.
With us?
Okay.
Right, that's what they do.
Which I would want to forward them the questions that we're thinking, so all the questions that you're thinking, Jerry, if you could give them to them so that they can research it prior to the twenty-fourth, rather than coming the twenty-fourth and saying, let me research it. Go ahead and give them a heads up what we're looking for.
And so my next question, Mayor, is that, uh, at the next meeting, um, after we listen to their presentation, airport and, and, um, McClear, are we going to make a decision?
I don't know, it depends on the presentation and what the consultants say, obviously. How, how could I have a crystal ball, who knows?
No, I, I guess my question.
If everything is good, then yes, why wouldn't you make a decision?
Well, you know, I could have been pushing the can down, do, do, do.
Oh, my God, okay.
Two years, so how would I know, that's why I'm asking.
Is there anything else to go to the city? Good, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Being in opposition, we are adjourned.